Okay, great. I'll begin and we'll see who's with us by roll call. Okay. In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers, a list of the meeting dates annually, indicating that this meeting would take place on Wednesday, June 15th, 2022, at 7:30 PM via the Zoom virtual platform. Due to the COVID-19 virus, Milburn Town Hall is closed to the public for the purposes of planning board meetings. The meeting notice contained information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio and or video means. Members of the public will have the same opportunity to provide public testimony as they would at an in-person meeting. This notice was posted on the Milburn Township website, Milburn Town Hall Bulletin Board, and Milburn Town Hall front door. Roll call, please.
Diane Agloe?
Here.
Gesson Halpert? You're muted.
Yeah, he's working on it.
Here, thank you.
Deborah Neves?
Here.
Trudy BJ?
Here.
Allison Canfield?
Here.
Vice Chair Daniel Bear?
Here.
Chairwoman Beth Sol?
Here. Thank you. We have a great, and I just, councilors here, both Susan and Ed, welcome. And we have one item on our agenda for the evening, which is the proposed amendment to the master plan. So we're both going to have a brief presentation and then discussion, as well as opportunity for public comment on the adoption of third round housing element and fair share plan. So that said, we will begin. Beth, I'm happy to hand it to you if you are comfortable to introduce yourself. I don't know that we, at our last meeting, which is also made publicly available, Beth McManus, who prepared the plan, provided a presentation for everybody's benefit who's in attendance tonight. She will represent basically all of the, all of the items that are included in the plan, so that we can move forward in our discussion. And if there have been any changes since what was presented on June 1st, I would ask that you highlight anything that is different.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Thank you very much. So, so just quickly, my name's Beth McManus. I did prepare the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. I've also been working with the municipality with Milburn for a little less than a year at this point to help them, to help all of you settle your affordable housing litigation and just generally get you through the, help get you through this court process. So for the board members, as you, as you probably recall, I was here just a couple of weeks ago to talk to you about the, essentially, the preliminary draft Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. Tonight, I'm back again, and this is the public hearing on the Draft Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. The document is virtually unchanged from when I was here before. I always make a couple of little cleanups to the, to the plan, but no substantive changes, no changes to sites or densities, anything along those lines. So the task this evening is for me to present the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, give all of you, board members, as well as the public, an opportunity to ask any questions, make any comments you may have. And then for the board, I hope, to hold a vote and potentially adopt this housing plan. If you do adopt it, this means that the housing element will become part of your master plan. It will be the housing elements of your master plan, and then the Fair Share Plan as well as, is an included document. So this evening, I'm going to run through a presentation for the board members. I'm sorry, this is going to look very familiar from what you saw just a couple of weeks ago, but I wanted to show it again for the purposes of public that are attending and also just, just for the record. So with that, I am going to share my screen, assuming I'm going to be permitted for that.
That's fine. And before you do, I just want to note, Mayor Megan says join the meeting for a record. Thank you. Welcome, Maggie. Okay. And that, yeah, Beth, you should be able to share. Let us know if you have difficulty with that.
Also, Madam Chair, while Beth is getting ready to share the screen, the record should reflect that this public hearing that we've commenced has been properly noticed in accordance with the municipal land use law by both published publication, as well as individual notice to the county planning board, and also to the Office of Planning Advocacy, all in accordance with the statutory requirements. Is that all correct, Eileen?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Beth.
That's okay. That's important, too. All right. So here we go. The screen share. Okay. Okay. All right. So first, I'm going to, I'm going to run through some of this background information pretty quickly. Members of the public, if they've been following along, and the board members from the last time have heard this, but I just want to include it as a reminder. So, sorry about that. My computer's running a little slow. So first and foremost, when we talk about affordable housing, I won't through, won't run through all of the income levels here, but I think what's noteworthy is that the income levels for when we talk about very low, low and moderate income households are not as low as what I think a lot of folks expect. And so just for clarity, when we talk about lower and moderate income housing, what that means is it's a household whose income does not exceed a set percentage of the, of the region's median household income. For moderate income, that's 80% of median income. For low income, it's 50%, and for very low, it's 30% of median income. And so if we look at, just as an example, a three-person household at moderate income, that maximum income is about $83,000. Maximum low income is about $52,000, and maximum very low income is about $31,000. So certainly significantly lower than the median income and the region's income, but, but as I said at the outset, not as low as I think some folks might assume. And so the other thing I want to address before I talk about what's going on in Milburn is a little bit about how we got here as a state. And very briefly, all of this goes back to 1975, when we had our first Mount Laurel I decision, the Mount Laurel I decision, which was New Jersey Supreme Court litigation regarding the township of Mount Laurel down in Burlington County. And this Supreme Court decision essentially stated that every municipality has a constitutional obligation to create opportunities for low and moderate income housing. This case was followed up with what's referred to as Mount Laurel II decision, and that was done in 1983. And there, our New Jersey Supreme Court found that yes, municipalities have this constitutional obligation to provide for, create opportunities for affordable housing, but more specifically that there is an actual municipal obligation, a number that municipalities must meet. With that understood, municipalities and developers went forward to, to address this situation. It resulted in a lot of litigation, not frankly too dissimilar to what we have now. And that resulted in the New Jersey Fair Housing Act in 1985. That Fair Housing Act did a lot of things, but part of what it did is it created the State Agency, Council on Affordable Housing. And those folks in Trenton worked pretty well for a couple of decades. They created, they calculated municipal affordable housing obligations, set forth rules for how municipalities could meet those obligations, and worked closely with municipalities to have their housing plans reviewed and approved. And all of that went awry in the third round in about 2001, when COA made a couple of attempts to adopt rules. For better or worse, they were overturned. It went all the way up to the Supreme Court with the conclusion of that process in 2015, when we had another Supreme Court case referred to as the Mount Laurel IV decision. And what that decision did, the most important part of it, is it told municipalities that they may no longer wait for the State Agency, for COA, to calculate obligations and produce rules and review housing plans. Instead, the only option is to work through Superior Court and to work with the Superior Courts to have a Housing Element and Fair Share Plan reviewed and approved. And so that's the process we're in today. The reason why municipalities go through all this trouble, the reason, the reason why Milburn is engrossed in this, like more than 300 other municipalities, is because they want to maintain immunity from builder's remedy litigation, or sometimes referred to as exclusionary zoning litigation. And what that is, is if a municipality has not, is not going through the process at that time, or has not completed this process of having their housing plan reviewed and approved, either previously before COA, now before the courts, what that means is they're vulnerable to this builder's remedy litigation, which is essentially a developer stating that this municipality has not fulfilled its constitutional obligation to create opportunities for affordable housing units. And then the developer essentially offers to help the municipality do that. How do they help? Well, they propose developments that the court essentially would approve, not site plan approval, but would sort of green light being able to move through the site plan process. It's a very simplified version, but, but ultimately, the danger is that municipalities have found vulnerable and have a successful builder's remedy litigation instituted against them. It means that they're going to lose control over their zoning and have a project built. That project must include affordable housing, but beyond that, there are not any significant, very many guides. What I can say, because the builder's remedy litigation looks different on just about every site that it occurs on, but it is always a project that is bigger and more intense, or perhaps a different use than what the municipality is otherwise, has otherwise zoned the site for, and is otherwise part of their vision. Quite frankly, if the municipality had, had had already zoned for that particular property to include the multifamily, or perhaps townhouse development with affordable housing units, the builder's remedy litigation would not be necessary. And so municipalities, including Milburn, go through this process in order to maintain control over their zoning, to sort of maintain, to control your own destiny, if you will, in terms of land use. And as we'll see, Milburn has actually been, been victim to this type of litigation already. And it's one of the reasons why, why we're going through this process now. So into that is a little history for Milburn specific. In 2015, separate apart from that 2015 Supreme Court decision, you guys started this process, and you actually had your first affordable housing project approved, and that is the Upton. A couple of years later, Milburn was hit with one of those builder's remedy litigations that I just described, and that was with the Silverman site, sometimes referred to as the Woodland, the Chatham Avenue property. As a result of that litigation, and in effort to try to protect ourselves, Milburn actually adopted Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. Now that site was ultimately settled between Milburn and the developer, and at that, and as part of this process, Milburn started this court process of seeking a Housing Element and Fair Share Plan that could be approved by the court. That process, as you can see noted in 2015, for every municipality that goes through this, through this court process, requires negotiations and settlements with Fair Share Housing Center. Settlement is technically voluntary, but it is heavily incentivized. It, settling with Fair Share Housing Center means that we are able to seek flexibility through the court process, and we're able to do so without going through a contested trial. And it's something that just about every single of the more than 300 municipalities that went through this process has successfully done. Milburn started that negotiations in 2019, and we were able to complete those negotiations in 2021. As part of our process of going through and working with the courts, we also had a couple of developers intervene in the process, meaning they become parties to our litigation. They include Woodmont and 249 Milburn Avenue. Both of those sites are going to be addressed in our Housing Element that I'll talk about in the future, or in later on today. We settled the Fair Share Housing Center in 2021, as I said, in August. That settlement agreement was reviewed and approved by the court in January of this year, and it resulted in an order by the court referred to as a fairness order. As part of the settlement agreement, as part of that fairness hearing, it requires that Milburn go ahead and begin implementation of the settlement agreement with the most important part of that, well, one of the most important parts, is actually adopting a Housing Element and Fair Share Plan that provides additional detail to what's included in that settlement agreement and, and through that process actually incorporates the contents, the terms of that settlement into your master plan. And that's exactly what we're doing here this evening. We've incorporated the terms of that settlement agreement into your draft Housing Element for all of you to consider this evening as part of potential adoption into your master plan. In addition to simply adopting the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, it also needs to be endorsed by the governing body. Now, that is not an adoption. It's simply a resolution that states acknowledgement that the planning board has adopted it and agreeing that this plan shall be sent to the court for the court's review and approval, and, and hopeful approval, I should say. In addition, the settlement agreement in this process generally requires adoption of a number of implementing ordinances, and those are all certainly, like any ordinance, we'll start at the governing body level, and we'll move through the appropriate process with planning board referral and ultimate governing body adoption. Another step is actually attending that compliance hearing, and that's something that I, as well as your other professionals will do, and that is the, the actual review and hopeful approval by the court of our Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, and essentially the final major step to the court process. But once we do that, we're, I think, obviously required to continue to implement the terms of our settlement agreement as appropriate, including, I think, most notably, the 11, excuse me, the nine main sites. Sorry about that. I see that on the screen. The nine main site, which is one of the more prominent pieces of our housing plan. So with that, let's talk a little bit about the contents of the housing plan. Sorry about that. So as we're going to, as I'm going to go through in a little bit more detail, just so folks are clear, there are a couple pieces of our obligation. In generally, there's, in general, there's two categories. The first one is the rehabilitation obligation, and that's an estimate of the number of substandard units existing in Milburn that are also occupied by low and moderate income households. It's an estimate based on the American Community Survey and the census data. The second component is what's referred to as a new construction obligation, and that's, it's generally described as the number of new affordable housing units that need to be created in a municipality. It's not quite, quite an accurate definition, but, but it does pretty well. It's, it's a good description of the category. That is actually broken down into two numbers, and that is the prior round obligation. That's the township's affordable housing obligation generated from 1987 through 1999, and then the third round obligation from 1999 through 2025. So our rehabilitation obligation is 109 units. Our prior round obligation is 261 units, and our third round obligation is 1,115 units. With the last obligation, I think, being quite large, and as well here in a moment, there's an adjustment to our prior round and our third round obligation to account for the conditions here in Milburn. But first, let me just quickly address our rehabilitation obligation. There are two, two part, two actions required and two actions expressed in our housing plan. The first one is participation in the county's existing and ongoing homeowner rehabilitation program. And the second one is a municipal rehabilitation program. The obligation, or the program fulfilling the rehabilitation obligation must be available to both homeowner and renter occupied households. Unfortunately, Essex County's program, like all county programs, are only available to homeowners. And so as a result, Milburn and also most other municipalities are required to also operate a, a complementary rental program. So if you, if you own your home and you're looking for rehabilitation funding, you would apply to the county. If you're a landlord and you're looking for rehabilitation funding, you would apply to the municipality essentially. So our prior round and our third round obligation, which, as I said, are 261 and 1,115 respectively, I think are quite obviously outsized for the amount of vacant land that we see here in Milburn. And so Milburn has, through, first through our settlement agreement, this is memorialized in our settlement agreement, and now just reflect, the housing plan reflects that process. We went through what's referred to as a vacant land adjustment process, and that's a process cited directly in the applicable affordable housing rules, and it's for towns just like Milburn, those towns that haven't, have an affordable housing obligation that is simply too large, given the amount of vacant and developable land. And so our settlement agreement, and as I said, reflected in our housing plan, reviews the amount of vacant and developable land in the municipality, and we're, and we are able to adjust that down to 114 units. So the 114 units, more specifically, is referred to our, as our realistic development potential, or RDP. And that is the number of affordable housing units that must be created generally in order to meet that prior round and third round combined RDP. However, all vacant land communities must, must do two things. First, they must meet the RDP, and we're going to talk about that. And the second thing that they must do, that I'll also talk about, is create unmet need mechanisms. Now, it's not expected that a municipality would meet the entire unmet need, that we would create zoning that would fulfill this entire obligation. But instead, there are a number of mechanisms that are required in every vacant land community that is intended to incentivize the creation of affordable housing where the opportunity may exist in the future. Now, like our RDP mechanisms, our unmet need mechanisms are stated in our settlement agreement, and again, are reflected and sort of expanded upon in the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. So let's first start with our RDP mechanisms. So on this map, and you'll see this again, this is just, I think, obviously, a map of Milburn Township, and it depicts the various locations for our affordable housing sites. Those sites that are in purple are our unmet need mechanisms. The sites that are in orange and yellow are our RDP mechanisms. And I think what's noteworthy is that the municipality, through the settlement process, made its best efforts to keep out the zoning changes that are required through the settlement and housing plan process, limited to commercial districts and to really shield residential districts as much as possible from changes in zoning. On this table, this is a summary of how we're meeting the RDP. Now, I'm going to go through each of these sites quickly, but what I wanted to highlight here is the fact that we are eligible for bonus credits. Family rental units that meet our rental obligation are eligible for bonus credits, meaning that you get one extra credit per unit, and we were able to maximize all of our potential bonus credits, and we did so through assigning those bonus credits to the Upton. And that's great, because it means that we'll get a total of 59 credits for just the 30 affordable units located on that site. One other thing I wanted to highlight before I start to talk about the sites in here is the fact that Township, in addition to the inclusionary sites I'm going to show on the screen, also has a couple of special needs facilities, group homes that are located in town. I have a policy of not placing those on a map, not that it's private information, but it, it seems, it seems to be a best practice not to, not to highlight the location of those in mapping. But what's good about that, well, not about the mapping concern, but what's good about the presence of these group homes is that they are providing a much needed source of affordable housing, and they're also eligible for affordable housing credit. As you can see, from this table, we're getting a total of five credits from these two group homes. So let's talk a little bit about the various inclusionary housing sites in the plan, and we'll start with the one that's existing already. And this is, as I said before, the Upton. It's located at 150 JFK Parkway. It's around three and a half acres. The site, as I think many of you know, has already been approved. It is constructed with the affordable housing units currently occupied, providing that much needed housing. And it includes a total of 200 housing units with those 30 affordable units, and it also includes a hotel as well as some office space. So this is a mixed-use site along JFK Parkway. Next, we have the Silverman Group, also referred to as 85 Woodland Avenue, or sometimes Woodland, Chatham Avenue property. This site was that builder's remedy that I had referenced earlier in the presentation. The site has, in addition to having been the subject of a builder's remedy, has also already been subject to site plan approval. That site plan approval provides for a total of 62 units, including 12 affordable units, as well as 10,000 square feet of medical office space. And I'm not sure if I said it before, it's, it's actually at the corner of Woodland and Chatham Avenue, excuse me, Woodland and Chatham Road. Our next site is, is locally referred to as the Wells Fargo property. It has a couple of different road frontages, including Essex Street, Douglas Street, as well as Milburn Avenue. This is a site that is about one and a half acres, and this too has already received site plan approval for a total of 53 units, including eight affordable units, and then a small amount of retail space, about 3,000 square feet. Our, our last site fulfilling the RDP is referred to as the Annie Says Property. This is referred to also as the 249 Milburn Avenue property, which is, not coincidentally, its address. It's a little over two acres, and this site, which has the zoning adopted on it, but not yet site plan approval, will have a total of 150 housing units constructed on the property, including 30 affordable units. And so as I said before, this table provides a summary of how it is that we're meeting the RDP. You can see each of the sites that I identified, plus those bonus credits, as well as the group homes that I discussed earlier. So with that, let's talk about our unmet need mechanisms. As I said before, the, each of these mechanisms is shown on the map in purple. So let's start with the, with the DPW property, also referred to as the Nine Main Street property. This site is a 100% affordable housing site that will be developed by the selected redevelopment, which is RPM Development. The site will be constructed with 75 total affordable units with the, with a compliant mix of income and bedrooms. Now, while the entire site is highlighted on this map, I want to be clear that it's only about 1.8 or so acres of the more than four acre property. So it's, it's a little less than half of the property, and it's on the eastern side of the properties, which will have frontage on Main Street. And this site is, is in the process of going through its, its design phase and also its funding application. And I can, I expect that we'll see a site plan application for them in the coming months. Our next unmet need mechanism is referred to as the Woodmont Property Site. This site is located, as you can see on the map, along JFK Parkway on the, on the northern side and not far from the Upton, the first inclusionary housing property I talked about. Now, this site is about 25 acres in total. However, only five to six acres are eligible for development. The site's zoning has been adopted, but there's a, something very unique about this property compared to, well, compared to other sites in Milburn, and frankly, compared to most other properties in the state. And that is that the site is, is currently owned by, by American Water, and as a result of its ownership by the water utility, as a result of its relationship with with water availability in the area, for example, you can see the reservoir on this map. This site is subject to the Watershed Property Review Board, as well as the BPU approval. The specific purpose is, anytime a property is proposed to be taken out of, out of open space by the water utility, it must go through this process to confirm that its developability can be, can be done with limited environmental impact, and the purpose of it will be for a, for a public purpose. The zoning for the site will go into effect once those determinations have been made, although the ordinance has been adopted, subject to those outside decisions. Subsequent to that, presuming we may get those. Subsequent to that, presuming they get those uh favorable decisions, of course, the site will will also be subject to site plan approval here in Milburn. But this property, uh presuming those approval processes go well for the developer, will allow for a hundred and ninety-five total units, including thirty-nine affordable units. Our next site is the uh the C District or the Canoe Brook Country Club. This site will be subject to uh zoning change that would permit uh eight dwelling units with a twen- excuse me, eight dwelling units per acre. With a twenty percent set aside. Set aside, uh twenty percent set aside of affordable housing units.
Apologies for apologies for interrupting you. I just wanted to ask Eileen, I see uh some of our members ended up back in the the attendee mode, if you could just bring them into panel. Um just wanted to note that Sujata Shan is here and Shreeni. Sorry Beth for interrupting.
No, that's okay. Um our next mechanism for the unmet need is the B two district on Morris Turnpike. This is an area that's subject to a zone change that will permit uh residential density of eighteen dwelling units an acre with that twenty percent set aside for affordable housing. You'll hear me state that twenty percent set aside uh for each of the upcoming zones. It's a typical set aside. Our next is another section of your B two district, although this one is along uh Milburn Avenue, as you can see. This area is subject to uh a residential density of forty units an acre with a twenty percent set aside. I'll also note that the Annie Says Property is located uh at the western end of this district, right here, if you can see my mouse. Although that site will be will be uh developed consistent with their uh site specific zoning as opposed to uh this uh unmet need zoning. Next, we have the B four district, which is uh is generally the downtown here in Milburn. This area will be subject to residential density of twenty-five units an acre with again that twenty percent set aside of affordable housing. Next, we have the CMO district at this in the uh the southern boundary of the municipality. Um uh this area will be subject to residential density of eighteen units an acre with again that same twenty percent set aside. I think our last zoning mechanism is the OR one district. This is again on uh JFK Parkway in the northern part of the township. Uh and this is for just a portion of the office and hotel uses that will in this area will be subject to a density of twenty units an acre. With a twenty percent set aside. And then our last unmet need mechanism is not a site specific mechanism, but instead is an ordinance. That'll be adopted by the municipality, referred to as a mandatory set aside ordinance. And what this ordinance does is it states that where there are use variances for uh permitted use. Or a D five density variance or a rezoning to create zoning for multifamily housing or attached housing. Or lastly, for redevelopment for multifamily or attached housing redevelopment plan. That a twenty percent set aside must be applied. This mandatory set aside ordinance does not change the zoning in any area of municipality. It simply says where these actions, where these approvals occur, a set aside must be applied. It does not impact the ability of uh say the zoning board of adjustment in in a use variance case. To properly weigh the positive and negative criteria, does not impact their ability to perhaps deny an application that doesn't meet the criteria. What it does say is if the board in this example uh issues the use variance, then they must apply a twenty percent set aside. Um and so the mandatory set aside ordinance plus the various unmet need mechanisms I just went through before. Constitute all of uh the township's obligations in order to meet its unmet need. So our unmet need mechanisms plus our RDP mechanisms plus our rehabilitation programs essentially equal. Our affordable housing plan for satisfying our affordable housing obligation. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Beth, for that presentation. Um I can ask you to stop sharing so I can see great members of the board. Um before we begin, I just want to ask sort of a procedural question. Ed, um Sujata joined uh a few minutes ago. I know she also attended the previous meeting when this presentation was given. I just want to understand if she is um able to vote tonight.
I think that gi- given the previous presentation and uh the the presentation tonight. And this is not uh an applicant hearing uh where different rules apply. So I think that, you know, given the fact that this has all been distributed and provided for board members, uh that she should be able to vote on this uh resolution.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you. Um before we open it uh to public comment from a comment from the members of the public, I want to allow members of the board to ask questions or. You can feel free to comment as well. Uh I see Ms. Egglow, go ahead, Diane.
Okay, um so I give somebody else a chance, but no one seemed to raise their hand. Um, thank you, Beth. Um just refresh my memory, what's the unit per acre density on Morris Avenue?
It is. Um on Morris Turnpike, we actually have two areas for that. Um the B two district along Morris Turnpike has a density of eighteen units an acre. I'm sorry, I I was thinking the B two district, we have two areas of that. One of those is located on Morris Turnpike and that is at eighteen units an acre.
And what's the other part on Morris Avenue?
It's no, it's I'm sorry, it's the B two district that we have two. One is on Mil- Milburn Avenue and one is on Morris Turnpike, so just one area along Morris Turnpike at eighteen units an acre.
So whatever would be considered on Morris Turnpike is eighteen units per acre.
Correct.
And downtown is twenty-five units per acre.
Correct.
CMO. Okay, eighteen, that's the commercial. What does CMO stand for for those who aren't might not be familiar? Commercial manufacturing.
Uh Office District, I believe, I'll did, yeah.
Okay, JFK Office and Hotel is twenty units per acre. And the part of Milburn Avenue where the commons is or Annie Says is forty units per acre.
Correct.
So I do have a lot of questions, so if you're bear bear with me. Um, okay, um. So are Beth, are you the person who drafted and crafted all of these overlay zones and all these numbers?
Um, no, so the the densities were determined during settlement discussions with Fair Share Housing Center back in twenty twenty-one. Uh but I'd have to uh largely, uh although not entirely, but largely defer to Graham for the contents of the ordinances.
But that was before Graham was with us, like who was I I wasn't in part of those negotiations. That was Richard Wasserman, Mayor Miggins.
Mm-hmm.
Well, before she was mayor, it was Richard and Mag- and Maggie, but we didn't have Graham on that, I don't think.
Are you asking about what set the what set the densities or who drafted the ordinances?
Wait, I'm sorry.
So the densities were set during our settlement agreement process back in twenty twenty-one. And I was involved with that. I don't think that Graham was brought on board at that point.
He wasn't.
At part of the implementation of the settlement agreement, as I said, is yes, it's adopting this housing element and fair share plan. It's also adopting the implementing ordinances. The ordinances that you've just referenced are part of that package. Uh now that Graham is on board and is your township planner, I want to speak for him, but he is the the responsible person for drafting those ordinances.
Okay, and figuring out what these densities numbers should be.
No, the densities were set during the settlement process, but the ordinance, which includes those densities as well as any other. Uh necessary parameters, those were done after settlement.
So who who was in the room for the settlement process? It wasn't me. I'd like to know who was in the room.
When the settlement agreement was done? Well, it's not quite so literal as who was in the room, but I I guess I could say I was in the room, so to speak. Uh I was working with Fair Share Housing Center as well as a variety of other folks in Milburn Township to uh to settle the case.
So that would have been like Maggie Miggins and Richard Wasserman. And they bring it back to the other TC members, okay? Okay, um but we didn't really have a planner in the room at that point. We had lost our planner of many years.
Well, I'm a planner. I helped I I helped with that process.
Okay, oh, okay. But you weren't Milburn's planner of record is what I'm trying to bring out, because this has gone on to our master plan. So I just want to, you know, put that on the record from my questioning.
No, I think, um so no, I was not the township planner. I think I was brought on as a I I'm not sure if I what the title is, but it's typically when I work for municipalities in this capacity, it's. Affordable housing planner or special project planner, but the role is the same to essentially help them with a particular task at hand with this. In this case, it was the affordable housing settlement process and then later the implementation of that settlement.
Okay, so I'm just trying to get at that we didn't really have our former planner or Graham in the room yet. Okay, moving on. Um, when Maggie and Richard, Miss Wa- you know, Miggins and Mr. Wasserman were bringing this to us. They repeatedly said that by agreeing to agreeing to a one hundred percent seventy-five unit development. They would be keeping densities down in other parts of the township. What I'd like to know and bring out for the public and people watching is what would those densities have been if we had not agreed to this project? Because as you know, there's a lot of opposition in the town about this. So what kind of densities are we talking about could have been higher than what we have?
So I really can't, I can't give you those specific examples for two reasons. One, those are part of confidential settlement negotiations and I I don't think I can, I think I I literally or legally can't discuss those. Uh at a public meeting, Ed can correct me if I'm wrong. Um but two, I just don't have the various uh iterations that had been discussed in front of me. But I do think that that is very much an accurate characterization. Um, the settlement negotiations were such that Fair Share Housing Center is. Uh as they do in all municipalities, they're looking for ways to generate as much affordable housing as as possible within a community. And the way in which the this township was able to offset requests for increased densities. Was through commitment to a one hundred percent affordable housing project, which had uh much more certainty associated with it. In the sense that when you zone properties, it's you're really leaving it to the private market. Uh for developers to develop or not. Um but with a hundred percent affordable housing project, there are steps necessary for a municipality to facilitate the development of those units. Within a certain timeframe.
Okay, but looking at fair share housing history and they really are not in favor of a hundred percent affordable units and we'll never know.
I don't think that's accurate. I don't think that's accurate.
I think it is. Okay, well, I think it is because, you know, I've researched what fair share housing has asked for. Um I know there was a. A lawsuit in other town for a town that did a hundred percent affordable, but we'll never really know. Because those confidential hearings are going to be kept confidential, we'll never know how these negotiations really happened. Because like I said, only two people in township committee were in the room. And like all the other planning that was kept confidential, no one really knows. So that's going to be an open ended question. We'll never know what we were able to save by agreeing to this plan, which I'm not, okay. Um, back to densities, why is it the B three, which is upper Milburn Avenue and by the Short Hills Train Station, there is no overlay?
I really can't, I I can't go back into those settlement discussions and. And provide that answer. I really don't have that information.
I think that's really not acceptable, Miss Manis, because we have every piece of this township being touched except upper Milburn Avenue. And the Short Hills Train Station. So I think people can deduct from that what they may. Um, CMO, it's a commercial area, it's walkable to town. There'd be plenty of way to build parking that has an incredibly low density, eighteen. Um, whereas Milburn Avenue that butts to residential of South Mountain Section and behind it would be Wyoming Section. Has forty, forty units per acre, which is double and triple that of Morris Turnpike, which is a highway. And CMO and JFK has twenty. So the fact that every piece of this town is being touched. I think that forty per acre is incredibly unacceptable and so high. And how that was negotiated in a confidential closed room is, I have a question, I don't know how that happened. Double and triple that of a commercial zone and a highway. There are four blocks between Parkview, Undercliff, South Mountain, Wyoming, four blocks. The potential for hundreds, hundreds of units on a two lane road, which is already backed up from traffic in certain times of the day. And the whole point is we can't stay because it's walkable to the train, because we don't know anyone moving in necessarily is going to be commuters. Many people are working from home now, commuting, we don't really understand how that's going to be. So we can't just lay this on that they can walk to the train station. Um, another thing, Canoe Brook Country Club. Um, I did, what was the density at Canoe Brook Country Club?
Eight units an acre.
Oh, eight, not even fourteen. I think if we're going to be talking um realistically, the idea of Canoe Brook Country Club ever failing financially in our foreseeable future is. Almost negligible. So I know that was put in the plan by our former planner years ago and that was almost like a give me. Because it's, I think realistically, that's never going to happen. I think that we should be really honest with everyone who are talking about that. So, um, let's see. So at the end of the day, I think this is really poor planning. I think it never put Milburn's best interest out there ever. I understand, you know, the duress, the um control fair share housing has. So for Milburn, not doing anything for forty years, now we're going to do something terrible. So I think we can, I I can speak for myself. We were given very little time to review this. We were, you know, under the gun, got to do it, got to do it, got to get this passed. Um, and then the public had no idea, we know how that has played out in the public's um understanding why this was kept secret, secret. And then as soon as the public found out about it, they were incensed. As soon as we all saw RPM's plan, the development was picked by just Ms. Miggins, Mr. Wasserman and Mr. Van Ayak. They were even more incensed. Um, so I think from everything I'm seeing here, this is definitely not putting Milburn, Short Hills first. I think, as you said in the beginning of your presentation, this is going to be going into the master plan, this will be the forever in there. But speaking as to the forever in there, Beth, two thousand twenty-five is basically two years away at this point. Are you telling us that these are going to be the overlays? Whereas two thousand twenty-five, are we going to be coming back and reshuffling the deck and saying, you know? I know we gave you uh eighteen at Morris Turnpike, I know we give you forty on Milburn Avenue and twenty here and. Eight, eight somewhere else. What do we know? Fair share housing, um with you at, you know, behind the fair share housing world. What's what's the guarantee for Milburn that this is it? Or you're not going to come back and say, oh, we need some more?
Well, Milburn is in the same position as every other community in the state. Uh and specifically just like vacant land communities around the state. And that is that this process that we're engaged in provides immunity. Through the extent of our third round obliga- is through the third round, I should say, which is. A little more than three years from now in July twenty twenty-five. And so that means that July twenty twenty-five will be the start of the fourth round presumably. That my entire answer is going to uh assume that we don't have changes at the legislative level. Or perhaps at the executive level in regards to how COA functions. So assuming none of that changes, which could really. Um upset the this entire process for better or worse. Um, assuming that doesn't change, our fourth round will begin in July twenty twenty-five. There will be new obligations generated for every single municipality in the state, including Milburn. Municipalities will have their immunity from builder's remedy litigation run out on that. On that same day in July twenty twenty-five and will be faced with the decision to start this process of all over again. For that fourth round obligation or to take their chances with builder's remedy litigation. What exactly is going to happen to Milburn and every other community, I really can't predict. I can say generally that they'll be given an affordable housing obligation. I think it's very likely that that obligation will be significantly lower for the fourth round. Than what we saw in the third round for a a couple of different reasons, but the the most significant one being that the round is much shorter. The the fourth round will simply be ten years versus the third round now goes from nineteen ninety-nine through twenty twenty-five, so it's all twenty-six years. Vacant land communities, including Milburn, will be required to update. update its vacant land adjustment, update its RDP to make any necessary changes. I can't at this point predict what those changes might be. As of now, I see no changes necessary, but I, I simply don't know what will happen in the next three years. And towns will be asked to potentially settle with Fair Share Housing Center all over again. What will be specifically asked of Milburn at that time, whether there will, there will be densities that are revisited or sites that are, new sites that are visited? I really can't predict. But what you do today to fulfill the terms of the settlement, which is what we're talking about, can only be helpful in setting yourself up for the fourth round. Just like folks are concerned that Milburn is being asked to do so much now because because we had not done something for the first 40 years, I think it's, I think it's logical to assume that we'll be asked to do more come the fourth round if it's determined that we hadn't done anything for 50 years, if we don't fulfill the terms of our settlement agreement.
Okay, but as you said, there might be changes in the legislature. There might be something from the executive.
There's no way to predict. Folks have been hoping for those changes for a decade.
Well, it's up to the mayors to get together and make some noise, which hasn't been done either. So at the end of the day, I believe this is bad planning. Not attacking you personally, bad planning for our town. I think that um, we're not necessarily protected. And what can become of this is really detrimental to a town that has not had infrastructure planning. It has not had school projections. So obviously you can see where I'm going on where my vote on this is going and I'm hoping my planning board members will really think about this really carefully before they put this into the master plan for the long, for the, the long term, next two and a half years. Thank you, Beth.
Thank, thank you and thanks Diane. Um, I appreciate your, you know, your thoughtfulness and, and thinking through what you wanted to say. Uh, and I don't, I'm not going to, you know, go point by point and argue. I did just want to make one comment that I think just was my observation and my personal reading and takeaway from it in terms of sort of appropriateness of density and where we put it. And um, I think you hit on the B2 district, which, you know, are, are commercial districts both. That's both this, the zoning where the Annie says and along Wyoming, uh, from Wyoming along Milburn Ave to Essex as well as up on Mars Turnpike. Um, and so the, the lower density is proposed, you know, up uh, on the, the upper Milburn Ave area. That's the 18. Um, those properties, you know, back directly onto and like basically overlook single family residential homes, uh, whereas the ones at the Annie says, as you know, it's there's sort of the physical geography of the, the train tracks on one side and, uh, you know, Milburn Avenue uh, in, in front. So thinking through those densities, in, in my opinion, I do think those are more appropriate and, and fitting and in fitting with being in the downtown. And you're right, we don't know where people are going to work or commute to or stay at home. But I think having more people in adjacent to the downtown is exactly what we hope for when we think of, you know, building that higher density, you know, downtown. Not high density, but just higher than what we have today. So those are just my reactions, but I, I think a lot of the other points you made, I, I hear. Um, and I, I did see guest on, you had your hand raised earlier. I don't know if you still have the question that you had before.
Actually, I, I, yeah, I, I still have a couple more clarifications, but Diane kind of asked the questions that I, I was going to ask. Uh, one was definitely on the densities, um, especially the B2 on Milburn Ave juxtaposed to the B4 where it's 25, I think, versus 40. It's right across the street. So like, I, I would really like to know the rationale between, and you, you explained the 18 and the, the 40, but then why, why different in the B4 district?
So in general, some of the municipalities, actually, let me start with this point. I'm, one, I'm happy to talk about the densities included in the housing plan because it's, it's important for folks to, to understand what's included in your housing plan. But I, I want to make sure everybody is clear that what we're talking about today is implementing the settlement agreement as opposed to crafting new policies. For better or worse, uh, perhaps for worse, for some, our densities and the, the primary terms of how we're going to fulfill our affordable housing obligation are set forth in our settlement agreement. And, and while it doesn't include things like maybe the setback of a particular inclusionary housing district is, does include the, I think the most important item, which is the density. So I, I just want folks to be clear that what we're doing is implementing the settlement agreement rather than deciding for the first time, whether or not these densities are appropriate, whether folks like them or not. I understand it's really significant changes for Milburn and that's, I think that's a tough pill to swallow, but I just want to, like I said, I just want to be clear. So with that said, the density for the B4 district is lower compared to some of the other areas in town. And while I had cited the, the most pressing concern during settlement, which was trying to limit the impact to residential neighborhoods, one of the other pressing concerns was also density in the downtown, an area that is subject to some environmental constraints in the form of flood hazard area and is also subject to traffic concerns uh, already. And so as we talk about, as we talked about those issues with Fair Share Housing Center, those two things were at the front of settlement discussions. How do we, how do we address these two items? And the result of that was to keep the downtown zoning at the B4 district at 25 units an acre as opposed to increase that density to something uh, well beyond that, which is what might have, which might otherwise be expected in a downtown. But instead, the discussion was preference to keep the density in this uh, heavily traveled area down to the extent possible and to also keep densities in zoning changes uh, away from residential districts, as I said, to the extent possible.
Okay, uh, can you, can you also explain when, when we're talking about density, does that mean that the units are going to become larger or higher or how does that work out? So the difference between the 18 and the 40?
So I don't know that there's, there's no stated difference in the, in the units, whether it's 18 units an acre versus 40 units an acre. I, I can't suggest that one unit, uh, that the unit inside the 18 unit acre district might be larger than a unit in a 40 unit per acre. I would expect and as you'll, as you'll see when those ordinances are ultimately referred to the planning board for review, they're going to be differing bulk standards. Um, so certainly I think it's reasonable that you might see a higher building height where 40 units an acre is proposed versus where 18 units an acre is proposed.
Okay, thanks.
No, I'm sorry. I was trying to get my mute to work now. Okay, so, but hopefully that these, these densities will not ask us for variances on height again. That's what I'm worried about. We just increased it to, I think, 40 feet downtown. And I have 40 per acre sounds tremendous to me. So, uh, yeah, I just want to make sure that it is in everybody's best interest that we're not creating a problem for ourselves, you know, and, sorry, go ahead.
No, I just wanted, so while I'm, I'm talking generally about how the density for this area will be 18 units an acre, density will be 25 or 40 units an acre. One of the follow-up steps that I think that you guys are going to see in the next planning board meeting or maybe the meeting after that is the actual ordinances that do the rezoning. So as I said before, Graham, your board planner, township planner has actually drafted those ordinances and those ordinances, Graham, I don't want to steal your thunder, I'm sorry, but so it adjusts the density, I think, obviously, but it also adjusts any other building standards that are necessary to accommodate the density. So the town municipalities, whether it's Milburn or Hillsborough or any other Nutley, any other municipality, once you agree to a specific density, you really have to sort of do two things. First is you've got to change the zoning to provide for that density. But the other thing you need to do is create zoning that actually allows that density to be fulfilled. So a really simple and sort of silly example that illustrates this point. If a town agrees to, let's say, 60 units an acre on a property, well, you can't keep the building height at only two stories because there's no way to fulfill 60 units an acre in two-story buildings. You have to adjust the building height up to make sure those 60 units an acre can be accommodated. And that's part of what Graham has done for all of you. He did the density and he also adjusted all of the other building standards to make sure that, uh, that that density can be accommodated because quite frankly, if we present ordinances to the court that the court finds that the density cannot be accommodated, well, frankly, we're not going to be eligible to have our housing plan approved. And we're not going to be eligible to maintain this immunity from builder's remedy litigation. So it's sort of a, a two-part challenge, adjusting the density and everything that goes into allowing that density.
So, so just on that point right there, did the building height have to increase? The maximum building height have to increase for the 40?
Yes, yeah. I'm trying not to talk about the details of the ordinances because they haven't been introduced yet. So it's not really appropriate at this point, but yes, you're going to see adjustments to the building heights.
Okay. And then my second question Diane touched on as well, uh, with the, with schools. And I know we're not supposed to talk about it, but I just would like to know, were, were the schools involved with the process at all?
No, the schools were not able to be a stakeholder in this process. Um, and that's, that's just, that's just unfortunately the way this process works around the state.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Allison, I see you have your hand raised.
Yes, I just have um, a, a few clarifications if you don't mind. Um, first of all, just a correction, Miss, Mrs. Zeglow said that nothing's been built by the train station, but that is the Silverman Woodland Chatham project that she was supportive of. So I wanted clarification there. Beth, as far as litigation goes, will, will you just go through that? You know, if we don't approve this, the developer would go um, to court and say that Milburn didn't fulfill their constitutional responsibility. Can you just go through that just a little? Not, not in great detail, but what I understood out of that was then we don't have control over saying where these zones are or the overlay. Am I correct by saying that?
Yeah, so, um, so the trajectory of, of a case like this, if Milburn doesn't proceed, could go in a couple of different ways. So let me just try to lay out one possible scenario that will hopefully illustrate this. So right now we are in the implementation phase. We went through a settlement agreement process. We got their approval of the court through that fairness order I referenced. In that fairness order, it states that uh, essentially the next step is for Milburn to fulfill all the terms of that settlement agreement. Like I said, most important is adoption of a housing element and fair share plan that reflects that settlement agreement. That's what we're doing tonight. But it's also adoption of ordinances and, and a handful of other tasks. So if Milburn does not fulfill the terms of its settlement agreement, whether that means you don't adopt the housing element or you don't adopt the ordinances, that means that.
Hey, uh, Madam Chair and Beth, I apologize for interrupting you. Um, but I, I want to be careful here as to
Please.
how, how we go. The, the legal ramifications of not fulfilling obligations under a settlement agreement are, are legal discussions that if the board wants to talk about that, I'll be happy to talk about that in a closed session. But with all due respect to Beth, uh, any, any things that she says or, uh, well, let me leave it at that. Anything that she says, and no offense to Beth, is speculation as to what may happen. And she's got a lot of experience in this field and I, I don't suggest for a moment that that speculation is idle speculation. Uh, but irrespective of whether it's speculation or not, the point is there's legal consequences to this and that should not be discussed and will not. I, I will not allow the board to discuss that in open session. If you want to have a closed session and ask me legal questions related to things like that, the board certainly has the, has the right to do that and I'll be more than happy to answer it, but I'm, I'm not going to allow that to be put on the record in a public session.
Thanks, Beth. Keeping me out of trouble. I appreciate it.
That leads me to my next question. So the hundred or 1,115 um, in phase three, that is not negotiable at this time, or is it?
That is correct. That is a, a term in our settlement agreement that has already been negotiated, already been approved by the court. And so those, essentially any, I would say anything that's included in our settlement agreement is not subject to negotiation. So that includes things like the, uh, the obligation, the sites and, and the densities for just a few things.
Okay, and one more question. Round four, you had mentioned that, um, if, if we move forward and we fulfill these obligations, round four might go easier on us for the better lack of legal terms here. Will the DPW property with 100% of the units being affordable housing, is that going to help us in the fourth round or in your observation of what's happened? You weren't allowed to finish that.
I, I think it's certainly, yes, although I'm not quite sure what you, how you would define uh, exactly what the question means. So I think it's helpful in the sense that that will be an uh, a very, that'll be implementation of a very critical and important part of our third round plan. And so we'll be helped in the fourth round because we'll sort of be starting that round in a place of, uh, in a good place, in a place of compliance, in the sense that we will have done everything we needed to, assuming, assuming we've done not just that site, but all of the other terms, we've fulfilled all of the other terms. We'll be starting in a place where we're a municipality that has gone through the third round process, gotten our housing plan reviewed and approved and, and built or done otherwise what was necessary for all of our sites. And so yes, I think that sets us up for an easier time, for a lack of better phrase, in the fourth round.
Thank you, Beth.
Great. Thank you for those questions. Um, Dan Bear. You're, you're still on mute, Dan.
Thank you. Chair, uh, Chair and, and I don't want to say Beth twice. Beth's mixed up here. So this is a question to you, Beth McManus. Uh, thank you for the presentation. I just want to go back to one of your slides. You don't have to share your screen, but it was the slide that showed the, the steps in the process. And the first step of the process, you, it was noted that, that it was a planning board action. Okay, it was the action that we're, we're going to take tonight, whatever that action may end up being. But there are predecessor actions that occurred. So I just want to say that, 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 that for the public's edification, that prior to this coming to the planning board, there were steps that were taken by the township committee. One, to hire you to develop the plan. And then there was a vote taken to advance that plan to the planning board, correct? So those were, those are steps that were shown on the slide, but did occur prior to, to the adoption step for the planning board.
I just want to be clear about one thing. The governing body doesn't agree or allow for the housing plan to be advanced to the planning board. This is your document that you guys own. Their execution of the settlement agreement sort of fulfills that role that you just described by, by virtue of executing the settlement agreement. It requires then that a housing plan go to the planning board, but it's, it's all sort of wrapped up into the execution of the settlement agreement rather than a separate action.
I, I appreciate that and the, and, but without that action, without that agreement, it would never come to the planning board.
Correct. Yeah, it, correct. There'd be no settlement agreement to implement.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, and Deborah Neves, I see you have your hand raised. Thanks.
Yo, um, I am relatively new to the planning board, so I have some questions that other people may already know the answers to and I apologize for ignorance or naivete, but um, it sounds like we do not get a say in what is in the actual ordinances. Is that correct? If we have concerns about language in the ordinance, we have no say over how it's stated or any opportunity to modify things?
No, I don't, I don't think that's true. Um, there are certainly some parts of it that I, I hate to, I hate to say that, but yeah, that the planning board really doesn't have the ability to influence like the density that's already been determined as part of the settlement agreement. If the board has concern about some of the building parameters, that you certainly have the ability to, to influence. Um, as part of the master plan referral process, you'll be given an As part of the master plan referral process, you'll be given an opportunity to determine if they're consistent with the master plan for certain, but also provide any other recommendations. If the board determines that, that you're, that you'd like to see an adjustment to the setback, I, I think that type of thing is acceptable. We need to, I mean, please don't, please don't ask for where we have, and I'm just making stuff up, where we have a thirty foot setback, please don't ask for a hundred foot setback because that's going to preclude that density from being able to be created on the site. But if we're talking about adjustments, more minor, that would still allow for that density. I think that's certainly within, within the townships and the planning board's ability to make commentary on.
Okay, and we can make those comments now or is that at another?
No, so tonight, the purpose of this hearing is simply for adoption of the housing element and fair share plan. And so while it provides reference to zoning changes that will occur, those zoning changes have not been introduced yet, much less referred to the planning board. So that'll just simply, comments on the actual contents of those ordinances will be, will take place at a different meeting.
Okay, so, so here's my question. We're voting now on implementing the settlement agreement?
Yes, on specifically adopting the housing element and fair share plan as part of your master plan. That is the only action that I'm asking of this planning board tonight.
Okay, based on what criteria are we making this decision?
The criteria for adoption of a housing element fair share plan, I think generally it should be consistent with consistency with the settlement agreement and consistency generally with municipal land use law practices. And I'll defer if I'm not, if I'm forgetting a, a criteria that needs to be cited.
Yeah, if I might, she hasn't forgotten anything. But I, I wanted to perhaps, in, in trying to answer your question, also address something that, that Dan Bear said. And, and I think something that is perhaps troubling some of the members of the planning board from the questions that I've heard of effectively, the die has been cast by the settlement agreement and sort of, well, what are we doing here? If the die has already been cast, we, our hands are sort of tied and, and I get that and I understand it. But in order to, to, I think, put it in perspective, you have to remember that this process started at the planning board in twenty eighteen. In twenty eighteen, the planning board adopted a housing element and fair share plan. And the purpose of that housing element and fair share plan was to be a prerequisite to the filing of a declaratory judgment act and to have the court make a determination that the housing element and fair share plan that the township had adopted in twenty eighteen satisfied the township's constitutional obligation to provide the realistic opportunity for the construction of its fair share of the region's low and moderate income housing needs. We did that. We, the planning board did that. The, the planner worked with the planning board. Also, there was some input from the township committee, but it was by and large done by the planner with the planning board and came to the planning board. The planning board looked at that document. As I recall, there were some amendments made even as late as the public hearing. It was adopted in twenty eighteen, in April of twenty eighteen. The township committee endorsed it, which was the second step that Beth had pointed out in her PowerPoint. And then we filed on declaratory judgment action to have the court approve, for lack of a better word, that housing element and fair share plan. Once we filed that litigation in twenty eighteen, a number of things happened, including fair share getting involved, which they get involved in all of these declaratory judgment actions by virtue of the twenty fifteen case that, that Beth had talked about. Was twenty thirteen and the twenty fifteen case that Beth had talked about. We had interveners, as she mentioned, who are third party developers who attempt to inject themselves into the proceedings in an attempt to advance their particular site as being a site that will be suitable for satisfying our affordable housing obligation if that site was not mentioned in the housing element and fair share plan. And there's the court and there's a special master that the court appointed after we filed a declaratory judgment action, who essentially monitors this, conducts mediation and so forth. So while we started out on the right track, as all municipalities did in, in the process, because you filed the declaratory judgment action and then all these other activities sort of intervene in, in the matter, the direction shifts from where we started to now we're in court and the planning board's not in court, the township is in court because it's the township that is getting the approval from the court of this plan to satisfy the township's constitutional obligation. And it's that process that started in twenty eighteen that took us through twenty twenty one, which ultimately resulted in a, in a settlement that changed the housing element and fair share plan that we started out with in twenty eighteen. Through a whole process of discussions, negotiations, I think as Ms. Eglow said, the township appointed, or she alluded to it, the township appointed a committee consisting of two township committee representatives which shifted around as, as, as elections took place. But consisting of township committee representatives, professionals and so forth to meet with the various parties, to meet with special master, to meet with fair share, to try to hone the plan to come to a reasonable settlement with all of the parties who had their fingers in the pot, so to speak. And we ultimately did that in twenty twenty one. As Beth said, the settlement agreement was approved in August of twenty twenty one. And that bore some resemblance to what we, what our housing element and fair share plan said in twenty eighteen, but it was not entirely consistent with what that plan said as a result of all of these other activities. So now we finished, to some extent, the first portion of the litigation. And one of the steps is to now come back to the planning board and say, all right, you have to, in light of what we've now done, adjust your twenty eighteen housing element and fair share plan that you thought was the greatest plan in the world. It turns out that maybe it was, but it wasn't acceptable to everyone. So in order to get or try to get it resolved, it needed to be changed. And now it comes back to the planning board to say, you need to change that housing element and fair share plan to reflect what we've now determined is the manner in which we are going to satisfy our constitutional obligation. So, you know, it sort of starts off with the planning board sort of dictating to the township, here's what you have to do. The township says, yes, okay, we agree with that. We're going to go forward with it. And then the township goes forward with it, but the planning board is really not directly involved in that litigation. And then it comes back to the planning board. And now, as has been pointed out by, by Beth McManus, correctly, that we now have to adjust our housing element and fair share plan to reflect this new normal that has occurred as a result of the settlement agreement. So anyway, that, that, in answer to your question, in terms of what you can change and what you can't change, this housing element and fair share plan has to reflect the settlement agreement terms and conditions that the township has agreed to. And, and there's two points there. One is, as Beth pointed out, the court has approved that as finding it fair and reasonable and that it does satisfy our constitutional obligation. But just as important, the township signed that agreement. They approved that agreement. So this is not something that is subject to approval of the township. The township's already approved it. Now it's just a matter of fulfilling the contractual obligations of a settlement agreement. And one of those is what we're doing tonight. I hope to some extent that has put some of this in a better context perhaps than we started out with, but I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah, I just want to make sure, do you have other questions?
Not that I'm going to ask at this time.
Okay, great. I am aware, you know, I want to make sure we do have sufficient time for members of our public to comment. And we do have over twenty attendees from the public, which is wonderful. I would still allow members of our board to ask additional questions. We have, but I'm eager to also hear from our public as well.
Beth, I just have one quick follow up, if I may. I just want to go back to what you had said, or I don't know, Beth McManus about you kept the downtown densities lower than along that portion of Melbourne Avenue, which I don't think makes much sense, as good a sense, because those four blocks of Melbourne Avenue are directly across from residential section, whereas downtown is downtown. And every time Mr. Boozak, that you say, we talked to Fairshire Housing, it was just Ms. Miggins and Mr. Wasserman. So I never was able to say what I think, or I don't know if Tara or if Sanjeev, you know. So the we is not the we, and the township committee, as Mr. Bear said, did vote for it. And that was at a very, very, very limited time that we were given this. And as we all know, it wasn't presented to the public. So I think as things come to light, as experienced, you work on something, you see some of the shortfalls. So, um, thank you.
Thanks. Yep, and let's just, I guess if we can refrain from pointing out names as, as, as Ed mentioned, I think that the, the composition of that committee did change over time, but understood. Thank you. Any other questions for Beth McManus from the board before we open it up to the public? Okay, great. So Ed, I just want to confirm the format. Will, will you ask people to? Because we don't have Eric with us this evening. Will you ask people to swear that in, if they're going to provide a testimony tonight?
This is not a
It's an application.
Hearing and on an application. So I don't think any of the members of the public need to be sworn in.
Okay.
They can provide whatever information, ask any questions they may have and we can proceed in that fashion.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure we're procedurally following along. With that said, then you can use the Zoom, the raise hand function. If you're just in Zoom, you kind of hover your mouse over the screen. I can see we already have a few hands raised, so we'll call you in one at a time. Eileen will be doing that. Please turn your camera on and obviously unmute yourself if you can introduce yourself. And then we can hear from you. Dave Cosgrove, you're with us?
Yes, thank you. Can you folks hear me?
We can.
All right, thank you very much. I, I have, I think really three questions for Ms. McManus based on statements that she made and, and hoping to really get some clarification. The, the one statement that you made in your presentation was that Annie says, since we're using that name, and Woodmont had intervened in this case. And in fact, Mr. Boozak's made a similar statement a moment ago. And isn't it true that, that they were not allowed to intervene in the case, either one of them? They tried, the town opposed it and the judge said, no, they're not interveners. Am I correct on that?
That is correct. And I and I appreciate your correction.
And the next, Ms. McManus, you made a statement that, to the effect that in a builder's remedy case, no one ever makes out better than the demands that the builder wants. And I just wanted to, is that, is that accurate or not?
No, it's not that nobody ever.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's not that whatever the builder wants is always what they get. That, that was not my statement. My, my statement is that builder's remedy litigation, successful ones, this is not a quote, but what I essentially said was builder, successful builders remedy litigations results in developments that are bigger, more intense and perhaps a different use than what the municipality had envisioned for the site. So the developer might want, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Beth.
You know, maybe the site, again, sort of a extreme example to illustrate a point. A site might be zoned for, say, two units an acre. If a developer proceeds with a builder's remedy and asks for a hundred units an acre, I think it's unlikely they're going to be successful to get a hundred units an acre, but I can tell you it's going to be more than two units an acre.
Okay, and for instance, Cranford Develop, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cosgrove, I just said, the other aspect of builder's remedy lawsuit is that essentially the burden of proof shifts. That is, once the develop, once a builder's remedy lawsuit is filed, it's, the burden shifts to the township or the municipality to persuade the court that this site and the proposal for the site is unsuitable for that, for that site. In other words, the, we then have the burden of going forward as opposed to the developer having the burden typically to prove that their site is indeed a good site for this. It's assumed that the site, when the developer comes in and the builder's remedy lawsuit is a good site, it's up to us to demonstrate that it's environmentally inappropriate, it's got other constraints on it and so forth. So the dynamic shifts in terms of litigation activity. Thank you.
And then Ms. McManus, for instance, in the, in the Cranford Development versus Cranford case, the court reduced the, the number of units from four hundred and nineteen to three hundred and sixty, correct?
I don't know that case specifically.
Okay. Now, now the last, last question I have is actually, might require a tiny bit of math, okay? Because the former mayor brought up a, a, a comment about there being no housing project in the Short Hills train station area. Ms. Canfield corrected that, which was accurate. What is the density of the, of the woodland project, the Silverman project? It's over forty units an acre. Isn't that the density?
Ah, I don't know specifically. I can, I, if you, I can actually run the math for you. It is, let's see.
Sixty-two plus ten thousand square feet of, of office space.
So it is sixty-two in acre, sixty-two units on one point five acres. So it's about forty units an acre of residential development, plus the ten thousand square feet of medical office.
Okay, and that was pushed through while Diane Egler was the mayor, correct?
You know, I wasn't involved at that time, so I, I really can't, I, I don't think I should be commenting on who was in place because I, I really don't have that history.
I agree and I appreciate that. I think we would, let's keep this focused on the, the application hand now.
Twice it's been brought up, the Silverman. What I said, Ms. Canfield and Mr. Cosgrove, there's no overlay zone in the ordinance for those two areas.
Okay, because the damage has already been done, right? Okay, that's all I have, folks. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, our next member of the public, Eileen, I haven't seen them come in.
It's just taken a while for them to get over.
Okay.
I'm trying to bring Avi over. There we go.
Okay, your name shows up as Avi, if you can introduce yourself.
You're muted if you have a question.
Okay, do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to choose my words carefully.
Could I ask you to introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, my name is Avi Brender. I'm a town resident for the last thirty years. And I said I'll try to choose my words carefully. I think that I, like most of the town residents, are infuriated by the fact that this whole thing was not brought more forcefully to the residents. This deal was done behind closed doors and now we hear that we're not even This deal was done behind closed doors, and now we hear that we're not even allowed to look at it or interject into it. With the conversation that I have with a few Township Committee members, I, I've heard that, oh, our hand was twisted to agree. Whatever it's the density or the rest of it. I have one big question. Who chose RPM? How much RPM is paying for that? And what's the reason that, and what's the reason that the Main Street property became 100% 75 units in the middle of town, 100% low-income housing?
So in terms of the selection for RPM, I just have to say, it's not, that's not part of the housing element and fair share plan. What is included in the housing element and fair share plan is the fact that the site was included in the settlement agreement and the fact that RPM has already been developed, selected, excuse me. The selection process is really not part of what I think the planning board should be considering for its consideration of adoption of the housing element and fair share plan. But in terms of why the 100% affordable housing project was selected for that site, while that too is, was determined in part of the settlement agreement, I've already addressed this, and that is, that site was included in the settlement agreement in an effort to produce affordable housing in the short term, one, and as part of that, it made Fair Share Housing Center more comfortable with some of the other densities that we see stated in our settlement agreement and now in the housing plan. So, as I said earlier, there was an effort to reduce density to the extent possible. One of the trade-offs for reduced densities is the inclusion of that 100% affordable housing property.
I'd just like to know if the people, which, again, I did not understand from your answer, when, when was RPM and who selected RPM?
While it's not part of this housing element process, I'll say that was something that occurred early in the year and is a township governing body process.
So not the town chose RPM?
Yes, the town is, the governing body made that, conducted a RFQ, RFP process, and selected RPM development as the developer of that property.
Okay. I would like also to question, who in this board, the selection, the lawyers, everybody talks very nice like a politician, who of you knows and has the experience of 100% low-income housing in the middle of any small town? Because I do. That's what I do. So I would like to know, who has the experience and understand the horrendous ramifications for this entire town of 100% segregated, low-income housing in the middle of town?
So I, I don't know that we have the answers to that on this board. This, again, as Ms. McManus said, this decision was made with the Township Committee, as well as the selection, the committee in negotiation. Ed, I don't know if you have any further information on it, but that is not the planning board's selection. We, on this board, did not make any selection of any developer.
So basically, I didn't get an answer to any of my questions. We don't know who selected RPM, and we don't have the answer, how come RPM got it for $1?
So we, we did get an answer that it was the governing body, which is the Township Committee. That's a different board than this board tonight. We are the planning board.
What about the fact that it's a dump, and there's maybe a lot of remediation work that will have to be put there? Did anybody do, did anybody do soil testing before allocating this as a building development resident?
I can say that the site's conditions are well-understood by the governing body, they're well-understood by the developer, and they're well-understood by Fair Share Housing Center. So there had, I don't, I really don't want to get into the details of that particular site's development because it's not relevant to the policy stated in the housing elements and the content of the housing plan. But just for the, for the sake of, of hopefully giving some comfort, the site is, has undergone testing, is understood to, that it will be remediated, well, that it will need remediation, the developers has committed to, to working with the township to see that the site is remediated so that it can safely be, be occupied for residential development.
So the developer will do the remediation?
And pay for it? Yes.
So the town is not paying for that?
The township is not funding the remediation of the property. We're not conducting that work.
Is this site being developed as a tax credit? Development?
Uh, that's not yet known. The funding has not been received for the property.
So what is the town getting from this? If the town sold it for $1, what is the town getting for this beautiful land?
The town is implementing settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Centers and is maintaining immunity from builder's remedy litigation.
We're not, so we're giving up whatever it is, an acre in the middle of town, and the taxpayer of this town are getting nothing?
So, Mr. Brender, I think, I think she's responded to that question, but I do want to have other questions. I think we understand your point, and I, and I appreciate it. But I guess I want to see if you have any additional questions.
One more question, please. Was there any study about the school system, five, 10 years from now? Well, how is that going to affect the school system, our ranking in the state?
Uh, no, I don't believe there was a study. If there was, I'm not aware of it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Frank Sakamandi, Sakamandi, you're in our meeting. You could just come off mute and introduce yourself.
Hi, can everyone see and hear me?
We can hear you, can't see you.
Here we go. Hi, my name is Frank Sakamandi, and I am from Lee Terrace. I have several questions and concerns about the proposed plan. I respectfully ask that you let me finish my statement prior to addressing my questions. I would like to know if the town did any due diligence on Kyle McManus Associates before hiring them to construct this plan. I suspect they did not. Otherwise, they would have discovered that McManus is a little too cozy with the Fair Share Housing Commission, and there could certainly be conflicts of interest in play here. From what I understand, Beth came in at the last moment and essentially dictated what Melbourne's Fair Share Housing Plan would be. After looking at the plan, it's clear to me that Beth did not have the best interests of the town in mind when constructing it. Beth certainly took into account Maggie Miggins and Richard Wasserman's desire to keep any fair share housing out of their neighborhoods. But beyond that, this plan does not represent the best interests of the town. From what I understand, the town could have elected not to engage with the Fair Share Housing Commission and instead presented their own plan directly to the courts. Why is the town letting the Fair Share Housing Commission have any involvement in our affordable housing plans? The Fair Share Housing Commission is backed by profit-seeking developers that seek to serve their own self-interest under the guise of promoting affordable housing. This is tantamount to voluntarily letting a group of pirates on your ship, then negotiating with them over what they're going to steal, and then, if that wasn't bad enough, providing those same pirates with a lifeboat to get back to shore with their stolen goods. It seems that the town has been repeatedly told by McManus and the Fair Share Housing Commission that it is in the town's best interest to negotiate with the Fair Share Housing, otherwise the courts could take over our zoning. I have yet to find a single instance of this actually happening to any municipalities in the state. What I did find is that there are some municipalities that have decided to challenge the Fair Share Housing in courts and prevailed. Hoboken recently had a victory in a legal battle they had with Fair Share Housing. Perhaps instead of overpaying Mayor Ziti Falcon, who is the town's former council, to the tune of $2 million, the town could have used some of those funds to hire competent, independent council and independent planning experts whose interests weren't entangled with those of the very developers and Fair Share Housing Commission that seeks to shake down this town. This plan as proposed also goes against both the letter and the spirit of the Mount Laurel Doctrine. The whole purpose of the affordable housing doctrines are to reduce economic segregation and provide affordable housing opportunities that allow low-income individuals to live side by side with existing town residents. The proposed plan to build 100% affordable housing on the town dump is de facto economic segregation. Furthermore, the Mount Laurel doctrines were originally designed to allow low-income individuals that work in the town an opportunity to live in the town. In the proposed DPW housing project, the town seems to have given developers 100% control over who lives in these units. With the other affordable housing projects, the town has responsibility for marketing and filling these units, which is more consistent with how other towns have handled this. Why was the developer given 100% control over marketing and filling these 100% affordable housing units? It seems like the town is being force-fed a bad bill of goods here. This entire process was rushed and mismanaged at every turn. McManus's fear-mongering seems to be scaring the town into a settlement agreement that is against our best interests. It is kind of like when a prosecutor tells a defendant pleading guilty would be in their best interest, even though they know full well that the defendant might have a better chance at trial. I implore this planning board to reject this proposal, so the town is forced to come up with a better plan that is more in line with the letter and the spirit of the affordable housing doctrine. If that involves the town litigating against Fair Share Housing or anyone else, then so be it. That would be a far better use of taxpayer dollars than simply lying down and rolling over. The town council failed to protect our town from this unjust plan, so it is now up to you, the planning board, to reject this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sakamandi. I, I believe some of that was statement, and there were also some questions, so I might turn to our council, Ed, and ask if there are any specific items which Mr. Sakamandi raised that you wanted to address, whether it's from the municipal land use law perspective or anything that has not been mentioned in tonight's meeting.
I'm looking through my notes as he was, as he was speaking, and I don't have, I don't have any specific comments to, to what he has said. I'm not, I'm not capitulating or endorsing what he said. I'm just saying I don't have any, any, I, I didn't see any questions in there that I could answer.
Okay, appreciate that. Okay, I, if we, I think we don't have any additional responses to what has already been mentioned in tonight's meeting in regards to the questions posed. But we appreciate and take your input. Thank you. Okay, our next member of the public is
Should be
Thomas Chase. So you can unmute yourself and introduce yourself.
Sure, sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Yes, Thomas Chase of Six Clinton Place, Melbourne. Yeah, I guess I wanted to make one observation about some of the questions, I guess, the committee members had about what you're being asked to do. And my understanding, and Mr. Buzak, or Beth can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the planning committee tonight is being asked to implement a housing element and fair share plan that satisfies the minimum requirements of the settlement agreement. One of the things that I, that took a lot of people by surprise when the settlement agreement was made public was the disparity in density ratios in the different areas in town. As noted, you know, the commercial and manufacturing office area below Shopright has a density now of of 18 or proposed density under this plan of 18, whereas the place on Milburn Avenue up the street, next to the Annie Says, has, has doubled that. And I think a lot of people were scratching their heads as to how these numbers that seem arbitrary were adopted. What you're being asked to do tonight is, is adopt a plan that has the minimum element or density ratios in the settlement. There's nothing preventing this committee from making those density ratios more equitable and increasing the density ratios in some other areas that are logical areas for further development. As was pointed out, why in the, the central downtown area is the density only 25 per acre, whereas up the street at Annie Says, it's, it's 40? Doesn't really make much sense. And there has been no study or any sustained examination other than just sort of the committee's gut instinct this summer prior to reaching the settlement agreement that those disparities that exist now make any sense at all. Nobody's looked at traffic, nobody's looked at commercial demand, nobody's looked at, at really anything at any substantive level. So this committee certainly has the ability to increase densities in other areas where it makes more sense, or even other areas outside of the plan entirely, to make this plan more equitable. And I note, in the prior action that you took back in 2018, which was the last housing element and fair share plan, the densities were entirely equitable. The CMO area below Shopright was 10 units per acre. The area on Main Street, which is the Annie Says property, from the Annie Says property down to like the PetSmart area, that's, that was 10 units per acre. And the area along Morris Avenue was 10 units per acre. So the last time you looked at it, you came up with an equitable allocation. So I think you want to ask yourself, why this time you're doing something much different, and why?
Thank you. I don't want to cut you off. Do you have further?
No, that's, that's, that's the statement and the question.
Great. Thank you. I just want to offer one item as a response, and I appreciate the concerns raised. I, while I agree, the most recent fair share housing plan was developed in 2018, this was categorized in this meeting and then subsequently revised as outlined by Ms. McManus and Ed as well. I just wanted to make sure you may or may not be aware of a Milburn Downtown Vision Plan, which was conducted, and it's, while it's somewhat unrelated, it still covers the area. You're asking some specific questions regarding our downtown. That was a plan that was completed in 2021 by the community. It's available, which took stakeholder and public input and is available on the Melbourne Township website, which did look at some of the items that you're bringing up in terms of density, as well as traffic and circulation. So I do invite you to see some of that thinking, which I believe also factors into kind of where we are at with the plan today. But I also open it up to our professionals if we had any additional comments or responses for Mr. Chase.
I mean, I'll concur, the planning board can always go above and beyond the minimum, or the governing body can go above and beyond the minimums in the settlement agreement if they chose to increase the density. It's certainly not required, though.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chase, for your comments.
Thanks.
Okay, Perry Ursel?
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Good, good.
Perry Ursel, 514 Milburn Avenue in Short Hills. Thank you for your time. Um, when I first heard of this fair share housing and all the development, I wasn't quite involved with the township until 2020. And the only time I became involved in, with the township at all was starting back in 1994, when I was acquiring to become a merchant and following, and I believe I was amongst your board back in 1994. Myself, along with my husband, I consider us a staple within the community. We work within the community. We have a business in the community for 28 years. We live in the community, and we own several properties within this community. So first, I would like to say, in one of the information sessions that we had, I did ask Ms. McManus about the overlays. Majority of my property lies in B3. And I was concerned why we were never even invited And I was concerned why we were never even invited to a roundtable or open for discussion as far as what plans were here. And it's obvious that the township is relying on Springfield, which is the Saksworth Avenue project. And I was told by Ms. McManus, I believe that meeting's information session, and forgive me if I'm incorrect, was January of this year. And she told me that she was not at liberty to discuss and that would be discussed at a later time. So what I've been experiencing since 2020 by asking questions to the township, I've been harassed. I have been victimized. I have been received multiple, multiple violations. The township has failed to come to me as a property owner and a business owner to discuss possibilities with my properties that may be in need of rehabilitation. But instead, we have been put on the attack by the township. And I wanted to know at what point is Ms. McManus going to answer the question, what about B3? Why was it overlooked? I understand that the township is up against the builders remedy lawsuits. And when I'm looking at these overlays, clearly these overlay sites are definitely questionable. And these are possibilities that these overlays have been in negotiations to eliminate builders remedy lawsuits amongst these certain developers and property owners. Obviously, as a property owner of multiple properties in B3, I am and my family appears to be no value that I couldn't even have the courtesy of the township or Ms. McManus giving us some insight about the B3. Being that we're part. With no disrespect, it's unfathomable that Mr. Buzak nor Ms. McManus have absolutely no comments to Mr. Sacramento. I'd like to echo the gentleman Ari and Mr. Chase regarding the studies, which I also during that very same information session, I couldn't understand that how can any type of plan be put into place without any types of studies? No school studies, no infrastructure studies, no emergency studies. But the burden is going to be on whom? How can this board possibly approve this type of plan without having the proper steps and things put into place? I mean, you have a DPW site that has even one sighting of contamination. What's the plan for the remediation? Who's going to be paying for the remediation? Is the responsibility of the township? Is it the responsibility of the developer? I mean, these are very important things. These are added on expenses that need to be addressed now. Not after the fact. And Ms. McManus, I know that you've been brought in after the fact. I know that this is what you do professionally for a living. But you've been hired by Melbourne Township. You work for the township, not for fair share housing. And you are to be exclusively at the best interest for the township of Melbourne. No one else. So there is some few questions that I did ask. I'm still, you know, in question about the B3 zone. I'm still in question about the studies. I can't even, you know, I can't even imagine that this board with all these questions and it's a shame that here are other residents that I'm sure there's multiple people that all of this was done so quietly. And then all of a sudden, the exposure came out. And now, this is like after the fact cover up. I think things were done behind closed doors. And sorry, but I think somebody got caught. And now we're trying to backtrack and do it all over again. And I think at this point, with all these uncertainties, I think this needs to be done all over again.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ursel. So I think there were a few questions, Beth. I don't know if you're able to provide any additional comments.
Yeah, let me take a, let me make an effort. So there are questions about why the B3 district was not also included in the overlay districts. And I have to repeat my earlier answer, which is the details of the unmet need mechanism, specifically like the density for this area, the areas selected are indeed subject to those confidential settlement negotiations. I don't recall suggesting that I would be able to reveal the details of those negotiations at a future point in time. That's simply not possible. I don't believe I would have thought that it was possible at that point. So maybe there was a bit of a misunderstanding. There are also, there were also some questions in regard to studies in support or helping to understand the impacts of the various unmet need districts, including but not limited to DPW costs, studies necessary perhaps for remediation and other topics. What I would say is the township has not conducted, for example, the school study that had been discussed earlier. Those studies have not been done. Doing them in advance of settlement negotiations is not a scenario I have seen in other communities for what that's worth. And in terms of DPW costs, I think this is an issue that predominantly sits with the governing body. That's going to be subject to discussions between the developer and the governing body as they negotiate their the terms for development of that particular property. I do want to remind folks once again that the site plan for the DPW or the nine main property will indeed come through the planning board. This board will indeed have an opportunity to review and potentially approve their site plan application prior to construction of that project.
But you are a professional. And if there's any sighting of contamination, do you even have any reports from the EEP or the DEP?
Yeah, the study, excuse me, the property has indeed gone through a remediation study to identify the areas of contamination and what the likely extent of that contamination is. The developer is aware of those studies, has reviewed them. And as I had said before, will engage in remediation to ensure that the site can be safely occupied with residential uses. That's all part of the understanding of the developer and has been incorporated into the various steps that need to be taken before the site can be occupied.
So you're saying that the developer is going to be handling and responsible financially for the remediation and not the township? Is that what you're saying?
As I said before, the township is not going to be conducting the remediation of the property. It will be done by the developer.
And consciously, you feel comfortable putting up, I don't care if it's 100% affordable housing, senior housing, mixed housing, mixed use on a contaminated piece of property. I'm subject of a property owner of a contaminated property. I know how nearly and how extensive it is to have the remediation done. And this is being taken far too lightly as far as the contamination. If there's one, two, or three sightings, you should be digging to China or requesting that it's being dug to China. I'm sorry. This is, and I'm talking from my personal experience.
I think contamination is very much a real concern for this site and for any property that's been perhaps used in this way or subject to, you know, previous historical activities that result in contamination. But I will say that this developer is very, has experience with remediation, has committed to cleaning up the site to residential development standards. And what that means is we have standards set forth by by DEP that state what standards need to be met before the site can safely be occupied with residential housing. It's not simply something that developer decides is good enough. But instead, he's got to meet state standards. And I have every confidence that this developer will do so properly. There's no reason to believe otherwise.
Okay, so, but you, you know, putting this package together, do you have any issues? Because, I mean, you're hearing people that are calling up. I mean, is it unreasonable for you to go back and ask to make sure that all of these proper studies that are done prior to any type of coming to any type of vote or conclusion or settlement? I mean, if you're working for the township of Melbourne, is it too much for you to ask, say, you know what? There's a lot of questions that these residents are asking and concerns and property owners that I think that we need to have this, this, this in place. And then maybe you wouldn't have so much the offensive of the property owners and the residents. Do you understand? I mean, that's not so unreasonable for you to go back and say, you know what, maybe we should hold off on this because there's far too much unanswered for you to go ahead. And you're asking the planning board to approve something without things put into place. You have no studies, no final remediation. I mean, if you want to go on that property, it should be, or everything should be completely remediated.
So the planning board's adoption of this housing element and fair share plan doesn't preclude any future studies. And I think that's important to remember. So moving forward tonight and making this document part of your master plan does not in any way, shape, or form preclude RPM from completing the contamination process. It does not preclude them from conducting any studies that might be necessary to confirm that the contamination has been cleaned up or the site is otherwise ready to be used. Furthermore, it doesn't prevent the municipality from conducting any future studies. If there's a desire to, for example, work with the school district to identify future school capacity and school demand. That can be done. Same thing for traffic capacity and traffic demand. That's certainly within the township's ability. The other thing that I wanted to highlight is when, whether it's the nine main, the DPW property or whether it's perhaps another site that happens to be in one of these unmet need districts or maybe the Annie Says property. The municipality or, excuse me, the planning board specifically, you guys have the same ability to request information and to be comfortable that the impacts are properly addressed by the development. So what does that mean? If a developer makes an application and due to the development of the site, there are road improvements necessary in order to safely move traffic in and out of that property, you have the same ability to impose those road improvements on the developer then as you would as you would for any other property that might not be subject to this housing element and fair share plan. So just because you put the zoning in place, just because you have the housing element in place does not constrain your ability to explore, say, traffic impacts from a property just like you would if it was a retail use being developed.
Yeah, I would just add to that in response to the question asked. I think you are asking some questions about site plan approval, which are important and good questions and which are in the domain of our planning board. So, and as you may be aware from hearing other applications, when we have a site plan in front of us that we're being asked to approve or just, you know, or not approve, those are the points at which we ask for environmental impact statement and clearance and traffic analysis. So those are all certainly within our jurisdiction when we have a site plan in front of us. That is not the instance right now. This is the fair share housing plan. But I appreciate those questions and those are important planning considerations. So thank you.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Your consideration. Have a nice evening.
You too. Okay. Jerry Kung, we should be able to hear you if you come off mute.
Hi, can you see and hear me?
Good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to answer Avi's question earlier. So RPM was approved on February 15th of this year. It was a contentious three to two vote by the township committee. The town's residents have never seen any of the other proposals. And, you know, I've requested some of the proposals via Oprah and I haven't gotten all of them. So take that for what you will. As for my statement and questions, I've prepared a statement and I've highlighted the questions that I'd like answered. So I'll just do as Mr. Sakamandi did earlier. I'll read my statement. And then if people forget what the questions were in the statement, then I'll just go through the question. So I'd first like to get some clarification on how the agenda for the meeting was set and who determined that this particular document would be discussed here at this time? And when was this determination made? I searched through previous township committee meeting minutes, but I couldn't find any notice that this particular document would be discussed today other than a link that appeared on the township website with no additional qualifications other than meeting materials. I bring this up because there doesn't seem to be a well-defined process here. Given that this plan comes from Kyle and McMenus Associates, shouldn't it be the case that the township committee reviewed it first and then referred it to this board for discussion? Since it seems this was not the process, what is the precise mandate assigned to this body by the township committee? Mr. Buzak, you made a statement at the beginning of this meeting claiming that proper public notice was filed. And I find this particularly telling. I'm sitting in this meeting today and it's not even clear to me what the mandate of this board is. How is the public supposed to have known that this particular planning board meeting would be the one where this plan was to be presented and then voted on? How can you in good conscience say that this qualifies as a public hearing? This is an especially busy time for town residents. A school is wrapping up. And it's particularly egregious that this meeting was scheduled to take place at this point in the calendar year. I can only conclude that Mr. Buzak's statement was meant for purely performative purposes, to cover his own tracks and does not actually capture the spirit of public notice. Which, after all, I suppose that's the point. The less residents get to provide input, the better when you're trying to get away with selling some of the most valuable real estate in our town for a single dollar. So now I'm going to get to the plan. On page one of the plan, it states that the plan supersedes all previously adopted housing plans, including the April 2018 Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. If there's a conflict between these two documents, which document controls? Also on page one of the document, it states that municipalities have been assigned a specific number of affordable housing units. But these numbers differ between the April 2018 plan and this document under consideration. I'm an engineer by training, so I always try to understand and approach problems from first principles. The part that doesn't make any sense to me here is how the RDP number would be 17 units in the April 2018 master plan. And now it's determined to be 114 on page two of this document? Can someone give me a simple answer as to why this number changed? How exactly is it determined? How can these numbers change from one iteration to the next? How can it be the case that both of these documents are consistent? And why did the overlay zones go from six to 10 dwellings per acre up to 25 and then 40 dwellings per acre? Are you telling us that this is just a coincidence? That the two zones that are two negotiators live in just happen to be untouched? And then now you're going to hide behind the excuse that this is confidential? This is not right. We don't live in a society where you can hide behind the curtain of confidentiality. On page 34, it states that there are minimal environmental constraints associated with the site of the 100% affordable housing development. This location is a town dump. You can call it recycling all you want, but the first hit when you Google Melbourne Dump brings you right to the DPW webpage. At the township committee meeting on June 7th, Alex McDonald stated that site investigation identified six to seven areas of concern, narrowed down to two, one of which was historic fill, the other was mercury. Site assessment is in full on the township's website. I've conducted multiple searches of the website and I still cannot find this fabled assessment. If this planning board adopts this document tonight, are you taking responsibility for this statement? If in fact, there are as yet unidentified contaminants that could lead to health issues for the residents of this project? This could be a huge open-ended liability for our town. Beth, you're claiming that remediation is by the developer. If remediation is not done properly, will the developer be liable for this in perpetuity? Because if we adopt this plan, our town is on the record saying that there were minimal environmental contaminants. Where is this in our agreement with RPM? Beth McManus, do you speak on behalf of RPM? Moreover, there are several questions related to the financing of this project. On page six, the document states that on July 17th, 2008, Governor Corzine established a statewide 2.5% non-residential development fee instead of requiring non-residential developers to provide affordable housing. Yet on page 39, it states that Melbourne adopted a development fee ordinance just last month. There is a 14-year period where we were not collecting these fees. Why was the town not collecting these fees? On page 34, the document states that it is anticipated that the development will utilize low-income housing tax credits for the development. In order to qualify for these tax credits, it's necessary to run a pilot program. I've heard that the pilot program, as it relates to this project, was I've heard that the pilot program, as it relates to this project, was scrapped. So could someone please clarify if we are indeed still pursuing this as a means of funding this project? This is critical information as it will have a profound impact on funding to our schools. Speaking of schools, as part of the master plan reexamination in December twenty eighteen, it states on page forty that stakeholders indicated that the schools are at or near capacity. And it was therefore imperative that the municipality remain in constant dialogue with the Board of Education moving forward. As land use decision and changing demographics affect the district's long-range facilities planning. Has this dialogue happened with the Board of Education? What is the plan to address the influx of children that would be attending Melbourne schools if the plan moves forward? If future studies find the land unsuitable to build on entirely, what is the town's obligation in that case? If they let this go forward and the settlement isn't finalized, isn't the town on the hook for providing that many units? And also, if this were a larger mixed-use development, would it still be eligible for state funds to build it? Because if not, wouldn't it make more sense to zone it for mixed use? And then a developer would have to pay out of pocket to build the units. Given the cost to build right now, perhaps they might not want to do so. That's the end of my statement. I have the questions highlighted in the document that I'm reading in case anyone was curious which particular questions I wanted answers to.
Okay, um Mr. Hung, thanks for your statement of questions as well as comments. Just want to bring up two quick words as my reaction. While I feel that that was a very professional response and thoughtful and you posed some questions which I do think have already been addressed. You also raise others which have not yet been addressed or may have not been addressed. I do just want to raise the word of respectfulness and just, you know, encourage all of us. We as members of the planning board, as you know, are members of our community. You didn't introduce yourself. So I don't know if you are a member of our community, but I I I do hope that is the case.
Yes, I live in Short Hills.
That's wonderful. Um so I just always encourage our board as the chair to speak respectfully to each other as well as those coming. So just as as if anybody's going to be responding, I also encourage us to use respectful language with one another. So that said, I may turn it over. I don't know if Beth, you wanted to address with any initial responses or referenced any answers which were already given. For example, I know you did raise the question, Mr. Kung, on the the schools, and I think that was already addressed, that that hasn't yet been studied, but a valid question to bring up. Beth, any other items you wanted to address?
Yeah, there, I think there are a couple of items that I can address. Some of these are uh in regard to questions regarding the notice and the agenda, that those items will have to defer to to others that may be in attendance tonight. But there were other questions in regard to which document controls the two thousand eighteen Housing Element Fair Share Plan versus this twenty twenty-two Housing Element Fair Share Plan. Which obligation controls, what policies are in control? As stated in this plan, uh this twenty twenty-two plan, this document fully supersedes the twenty eighteen housing plan. So the obligation stated in twenty eighteen is not the township's obligation, that housing plan, if and when this planning board adopts this this twenty twenty-two housing plan will essentially render the former housing plan irrelevant in the sense that it cannot be relied upon for for policy or for determining the obligation. As part of that, one of the, one of the common themes in both plans is the fact that Melbourne Township went through a vacant land adjustment. Uh as was referenced by Mr. Kung, our uh RDP increased significantly from twenty eighteen through well, through what you see in this twenty-two, twenty twenty-two housing plan, but but really this housing plan is not the document that determined the vacant land adjustment results that RDP. That was actually done, as I had testified to in my presentation, that was done as part of the settlement agreement process. So the planning board uh does not have the ability to adjust that RDP tonight or through a subsequent meeting and change how it's addressed in the housing plan. But that said, it went up for for probably a handful of reasons, as folks, I think, understand. I I'm not the planner that drafted that twenty eighteen housing plan, so I'm I'm really not prepared. I'm not prepared to talk about the details of how that RDP was generated in part because I didn't do the work, but also because quite frankly, it's not relevant anymore.
Why is it possible to change? I I there 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 doesn't seem to be
Why it changed? I'll explain that in just a moment. Um so I, so as I started to say, I can't get into the details about what site may have been included versus now. But generally speaking, what happens during the settlement process is municipalities submit a vacant land adjustment to Fair Share Housing Center and it's reviewed and maybe accepted or maybe adjusted through that settlement process. Adjust adjustments that may have occurred in Melbourne may have included the addition of sites. It made up, may have adjusted densities, the the affordable housing generation of each site upward. And the other thing it does is it incorporates sites that are going to be developed during the third round. So as we look to our the properties that generate RDP and the properties that satisfy the RDP, they are largely one in the same. So if we take, for example, just the the Annie Says property as an example, that site, I don't believe was included in your twenty eighteen RDP. The site is one of our settlement terms. It's development of it is one of our settlement terms because it's going to be used to satisfy our third round obligation. Generally speaking, that means it's included in the RDP. So that's just one example, one specific example of how the RDP has changed. But I I really want to encourage folks to understand that the vacant land adjustment of uh that Melbourne sees reflected in its housing plan was actually completed and negotiated as part of a separate process. And that was your twenty twenty-one settlement process. This Housing Element and Fair Share Plan simply reflects the terms of of that part of the settlements.
So you're telling me that these terms were decided last year and that was prior to any of the residents being informed as to what the contents of the settlement were. So you're you're basically just telling us this is what was decided and you have no recourse as residents of this town. Is that correct?
And I'm just simply explaining the settlement process and the nature of it.
But we're we're sitting here today, you're asking the planning board to approve this, but you're basically saying, no planning board. You're just approving the settlement agreement that happened last year that no one knew the contents of.
That our elected officials and others were part of the the decisions on that, as as described earlier in this meeting, yes.
Yeah, yes, but so no one knew the content, even the planning board didn't know the contents of what was being approved by the town council last year.
The settlement agreement was between Town Council and Fair Share Housing Center. The planning board
But the contents of the set, the contents of the agreement were never made public to the residents prior to the township committee passing it. And this, I understand, our legal counsel has changed their tune of because there was a meeting back in March, I believe, where our legal counsel, I I don't remember if it was Busak or Marazidi, they said they miscommunicated the the confidentiality reasons. And so they were saying there was confusion between confidentiality of the negotiations versus confidentiality of the contents of the settlement. And those are two separate things. I don't want to conflate those here. So
I am really reluctant to take focus away from the planning board's tasks tonight, which is adoption of the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan and instead focus on settlement discussions that occurred in the prior year.
This was one of the questions in my, in my statement, which is who determined the agenda for today's meeting?
I can provide some response to that because you also asserted that the the plan had not been shared or discussed. That is not the case. In fact, Ms. McManus both presented at our, the last meeting two weeks ago and that meeting was with a very similar presentation to tonight was made available and as all our meetings are via YouTube and it's all available to be rewatched. So it wasn't a matter of being snuck in or somebody being noticing it just to cover themselves, which is kind of the the actual, the words and assertions you made. So I do want to clarify that for the record that not only did we correctly notice and and
clarify what I meant. I didn't say that there was no agenda. I'm just, it's not clear to me what the exact mandate of today's meeting is. So I I I understand on the minutes, it says there's going to be discussion and adoption of this. But is there no back and forth? Like if there's inaccuracies inside of the document, are those just not going to get addressed? So it's either you adopt it all in full today or you don't. Is that?
So this is why we had our first, the the plan was presented to the board and circulated and we had the opportunity to review. And then we're coming tonight with any questions if people have right grammatical corrections, if that's sort of the the content that you're talking about or
So amendments are in order in terms of the like, will there be, if there, if there, if there's something gravely wrong with this plan? I I I don't know, maybe, maybe the town isn't comfortable with saying that there's minimal environmental issues with the dump site. Like maybe we're not comfortable with that as a town. Like do we amend the plan and then we change it and then we adopt it? I I guess procedurally, I don't understand sort of the purpose of today's meeting.
Ed, can you clarify? I don't think I'm answering it sufficiently.
Well, let me, let me try. I thought you did answer it sufficiently. The published public notice that was in the newspaper as required in the municipal land use law made it clear that we will conduct a hearing uh on this particular housing element and fair share plan, which was available at the planning board office. It was available online. And the notice further provided that the uh planning board had the right to make any adjustments or amendments to that plan at the public hearing and adopt the plan at the public hearing without any further notice. So I think that, not I think that, the notice was perfectly clear as to what the charge was for the planning board tonight, what the agenda was going to be and what the action that was to be taken was going to be.
So to be clear, it is possible for amendments to be proposed to this document based on feedback from public comment and then potentially passed with those amendments.
That, that is correct. With with the caveat, because I don't want this to be misinterpreted, with the caveat that this Housing Element and Fair Share Plan reflects the determinations that were set forth in the settlement agreement, as we've said now multiple times, both I said it, Ms. McManus said it. So for example, the uh ability of the planning board to change density in a particular zone or to cut out properties in a particular zone would be that is set forth in the settlement agreement would be inconsistent with the settlement agreement. And that kind of amendment uh would not advance the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan portion of the settlement agreement.
Okay, but the, but the, the purpose of the planning board is to is to look, is to assess this document and see if it comports with prior documents that were approved by the planning board. The April twenty eighteen master plan.
No, I don't think I've said that at all. I I said what I said. I I I can't make it any clearer than I have.
Okay, so essentially the planning board, you're you're telling me and the community that the planning board's hands are tied because of the settlement agreement.
Those are your words, sir, not mine. I said what I said. You can interpret it.
Okay, that's my understanding. It's fine.
Okay. I just want to make sure we can get to all the questions we do have tonight from members of the public, but were there any additional questions that we haven't addressed of yours?
Will the, will the developer be liable in perpetuity if remediation of the site is not done properly?
I I don't know the answer to that question because I'm not involved in the discussions with the developer of that site.
I I think that's a question that's not properly for this planning board. That's a governing body question.
But I I think it's important to consider this because this, this plan, it says on page thirty four, there are minimal environmental constraints associated with the site. So if there are not minimal environmental constraints associated with the site and someone down the line fifteen years gets really sick from some unknown contaminant there, who is responsible?
Like I said, that's not a question for this planning board. It's not relevant to the housing element. That's
Prior to approving it, regardless of what happens at the township committee meeting. This is a doc, we, you cannot pick and choose portions of the document that that suit you. So
I think we hear you.
Okay, because I don't want our community to be on the hook when, you know, somewhere down the line, they say Melbourne Planning Board approved the fact that this site, it said minimal environmental constraints. I I I just want that on the record. So another question I had was, why was the town not collecting redevelopment fees until just last month?
So you don't mean redevelopment fees, you mean development fees?
Yes.
Yeah, the reason for that is the township wasn't, was not able, we're not legally permitted to collect and retain those development fees. In order for a municipality to collect and retain those development fees, they have to enter through the court process, have a development fee ordinance approved and either have a spending plan approved or commit to having it approved in the, in the short term. Melbourne had not done that until recently. The law that you're reading authorized or required a two point five percent non-residential development fee. But what the detail that you're missing is that municipalities were only able to retain, to keep those fees themselves if they went through this process. Otherwise, they're required to collect it and then send the money to the state.
Okay, I'll have to, I'll have to go back and read it in more detail.
Okay. Thank you for your comments as well as the questions. I think you raised helpful points for consideration.
Thank you.
Jean Pasternak, you should be with us. Um I don't know if we can hear you yet. Go ahead and unmute.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. We got you.
Sorry. Jean Pasternak, three, four, two, Hobart, resident of twenty-six years in Melbourne. Um I have quite a few questions and some things to to read out. Beth, I think, um McManus, sorry, I think that you said that the developer will be conducting remediation. And I know we just had a long conversation about who would pay, but you made this statement that the developer will be conducting remediation and answer to the question of who will pay for the remediation. I just want to be really clear about the words you used. The developer will be conducting, but we don't know who will be paying for remediation.
Let me be more clear. I'm sorry. I I wasn't trying to dodge the question. The township is not the township is not conducting the remediation. We are not paying RPM development to do the remediation. We're not, we're not conducting pass-through billing, i- if you will. That remediation activity and the funding is going to be conducted by the developer.
Okay. Fully, cost-wise, actually doing the work. And then in terms of the quality, who, what does the does the township have any jurisdiction over the quality of the remediation? Will we be able to make sure that it's done to the highest possible quality? How would that be determined? Is it during negotiation? There's, you know, some remediation that could be done cursorily and there's in-depth remediation. What standard is going to be applied? How is that determined?
So I can't speak to the specific standard just because I don't do remediation work, but what I can tell you is this remediation is going to be handled in a manner similar to what we'd see on any other property across the state in the sense that there is an LSRP, a licensed site remediation professional that has been assigned to the site or assigned to the case. And that professional will oversee the remediation activities to ensure that uh the work plan to do the remediation meets state standards and then that the actual remediation and the resulting remediated property meets those state standards. I, I believe that the municipality, municipalities generally are obligated to uh to meet those state standards and there's no reason there's no option to to, to deviate, at least in terms of having a lower state standard, a lower standard. Less clean, if you will.
Okay, so then that, to, to really hold the person who's doing this remediation, the developer, hold their feet to the fire, is there going to be any liability or is that standard as well in these types of developer agreements that they retain liability given that they did the job?
There is probably a legal framework. I'm sure there is a legal framework in regard to liability for a property, but I really don't know it. And I have to, I'm sorry, but I've got to reiterate my earlier comments, which are liability and really the details of remediation. That is, that is not plan, that's really not subject to tonight's hearing. That's really base, that's really subject to the agreement between the township and RPM developments. And that'll occur at the governing body meetings as opposed to at this planning board meeting.
Okay, well, I, I hear that, but I also hear that people are voting on something and they don't have all the information. And this is really a critical issue in our community. As you know, there's a petition with thousands of people who's, a thou, over a thousand people have signed it. You have people speaking at meetings tonight and the township committee meetings, I'm sure you've heard about. So we clearly are very concerned. So I think it is important and I, I do think it is relevant tonight. So forgive me. Being just with you on that. Why, I, I guess this is from Ms. Zoll. Why are these meetings not held in person? I, I was looking at the notice about tuning in on Zoom and it says that the, these Zoom meetings are to be held under an emergency order or when town hall is closed. That hasn't been the case for a long time. Why are these still on Zoom? Why aren't we able to gather in, in person and be able to be a community together, talking about something transformational like this tonight? And we're doing it on Zoom. I just wonder.
Yeah, I appreciate that, that question. I, well, as is very much the case at our May meeting when I had not tested positive, I was in fact positive and tested positive the next day. I think we've still very much have COVID transmitting in our community. And we determine it because of our board, the size of our board and the proximity, which we would need to sit on the dais. We don't have a, a physical site where we can gather right now. It, our township committee is, is a board of five members. It's a lot smaller. We have not determined it, it to be safe, to be able to be physically distanced in a safe manner.
I, I, I hear that, but I find that a bit of an, I, I, I understand it, I do. But I also feel that we have many buildings in our township that this meeting could be out with plenty of space, including the, the high school auditorium and other places. And I think something like this should have been held in person. So that's just my personal point of view. The, the issue about consistency between the fair share settlement and land use laws, I heard that discussed. I think Deborah brought that up and Beth talked about it. What about the consistency with our master plan? Like the overall plan that's been and like, what has been done to look at what was agreed for this township versus what is now being imposed by this fair share settlement? And is there, has there been areas identified that really just aren't consistent with the vision for this township? That would mean the, the plan, elements of the plan just don't work.
So in terms of master plan consistency. A couple of things. So in part, I'm going to punt on that to Graham, your township planner. But I also just want to, before I do that, I want to highlight the fact that the settlement agreement here, like just about every other settlement, was required to be executed before the municipality could undergo a much larger, more comprehensive master plan process. And as a result of that, what we, what we have here this evening is the municipality really being tasked with implementing the settlement agreement rather than being given an opportunity to execute a settlement agreement and then take a step back as to whether or not it chooses to, to continue, chooses to implement it. In fact, it's, it's really directly tasked with, now that you've executed the settlement agreement, it's time to implement it. The first step, one of the first steps is adoption of a housing element and a fair share plan. In terms of master plan consistency, I'll defer to Graham if there's any commentary he might like to make on that topic.
So I guess what I'm hearing is that the fair share housing, they, they are able to supersede a township or municipality's desires through its master plan for what it wants its community to be.
I mean, I think, I think the entire part, the purpose of the Mount Laurel doctrine is to see a municipality implement zoning changes that would provide for new opportunities for low and moderate income households. And just by its very nature, that's going to need inconsistencies with zoning and most likely inconsistencies with its existing master plan. So in that regard, Melbourne is really no different than, than what we see. I would refrain from saying this is a fair share housing center issue or a problem. It's really inherent in the entire nature of the process. Fair share housing center just happened to be one of the main parties in the litigation.
And then would you say that, that some municipalities have done this better than others? For example, in April twenty eighteen, we submitted a plan and within months, we could have adopted an inclusionary zoning. We could have adopted a redevelopment fee. We could have surveyed all existing units that need, needed rehab and so forth, which we did not do. In addition, a declaratory judgment action plan was submitted and it was three days late after the deadline of the court. So, you know, there is a quality issue, I think, that, that I would, based on what you said, there is a quality issue. I think it was even noted in your, on page twelve. Basically, the last race to the courthouse. So I, I mean, we didn't do the right thing in April of twenty eighteen as a township committee. So I, I just want to, I mean, it's really more of a comment. I don't really want to hear what you have to say about it because I think the facts speak for themselves and you did say it in the report, so.
I know you don't want to hear my response, but I, I have to just say one thing.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't mean that. It's fine.
I, I just don't want people to think that if the twenty eighteen housing plan had been adopted and implemented and you had adopted the ordinances that were proposed or suggested in that housing plan, that that plan would have been approved by the court. And we would be sitting, sitting pretty, so to speak, with the judgment of proposed and immunity from builders' funding litigation. There's really no reason.
No one has a crystal ball and no one should rewrite history either. We should tell it like it is with the facts and the statements. Another comment that, that I heard you say tonight and I've heard you say it before is that nothing was done in over forty years. I really think that that's such a, a dishonorable statement to make. That we have an Upton sitting right there where we have affordable housing and that was done within the forty year timeframe. There were other things done based on the laws at that time. So I just want to also clarify, you know, my understanding anyway, from looking at everything over a long period of time, Melbourne was not sitting on its hands. And this whole business of kicking a can down the road statement is very political. It's not true. Things were done. We have an actual project alive with people living in it in affordable units today. And that was a result of things that have been done. So I just wanted.
Often was about forty years after the Mount Laurel one decision though, and, and that's the issue. Because the Mount Laurel one decision was in nineteen seventy five, the Upton was approved in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen or so.
Other, other things at that time, during that period of time were done that were allowable under the law. So I think you have to be honest about that because it's not a building that was built, doesn't mean nothing was done. That's all I'm saying. Okay, so another point I wanted to raise is Melbourne had no planning professional, as someone pointed out during the fair share negotiations. I think that is a fact as well. You were not representing Melbourne. There are the planning professional for Melbourne was absent. There was no one. It was a ghost. So we had an attorney, however, that was representing us. He's here tonight. However, he admitted at a public meeting, I guess it was in March at the Melbourne Middle School, that he represented the developer chosen by Melbourne for the dump project, RPM at nine Maine. This, as a regular resident, looks like a real conflict. I don't believe my interests or those of my neighbors were represented fairly, equitably and properly in these negotiations as a result. So I just want to make that clear. Other communities such as Bridgewater, Hoboken, Sparta, they're fighting back and they are winning. Their elected officials and their land use boards are saying no to some of the projects that are being proposed by fair share. They're going back and saying no. So I don't think it's fair to be so to use the language that sounds so fatal, like there's no way we can do anything. That is not true. Those elected officials and their appointed boards are listening to their residents and they are saying no. And I hope this board has done its homework to look at some of these recent decisions and, and votes that have been taken against some of the imposition coming from fair share housing. We don't have a single feasibility study on our schools, traffic, flooding, safety congestion, on any of the developments described in the plan. I know I heard, I guess Beth say, Beth Saul say that as each project will come before the board, they can demand studies. But is there ever going to be an overall look at how all of this is going to impact? So that when you put each project in its context, you can see the cumulative effects, the marginal effects of each of these projects that are going to impact our community in every way. The schools, the traffic, flooding, safety, congestion, all of those, all of those issues as well as environmental. Knowing that we have this phase two study ongoing. I think that we need to, to understand that as a community and I think you should as a board. So I hope somebody can address that. I just wanted to talk about, I just happened to randomly talk to somebody. I was doing a get out the vote thing on, on election day. And I talked to a gentleman named Joseph Bar. I think his name is Barbara, Barbanelle. He said that he was a member of the Environmental Commission. I guess up until this year and he, I looked at some minutes from December twenty twenty one where he did speak. He said that, let's see, a concept plan needs to be submitted by twelve thirty one to the council on affordable housing. There would be an extension at the end of February to choose a new location, waiting on environmental report for eleven Maine. As contamination exists on that sites, site, Joe Barbanelle questioned if the response was needed to the environmental assessment by twelve thirty one. Jorge stated a report was done and they are willing, waiting, sorry, on the outcome. Joe also asked if there was any discussion if the containment extends beyond DPW and includes the paper mill theater, old bike shop, storefront location. Who will resolve the remediation? Then what he said to me on the phone was really kind of very concerning. He said, he told the commission that site was absolutely contaminated, that remediation was prohibited and no housing should be built there. He was unequivocal in his condemnation of using the DPW eleven Maine, nine Maine, whatever it is for housing. He's a chemical engineer. He sat on the environmental commission and I just wondered where was his input channeled? Did anybody hear him ever say this? I mean, we had a guy that has background on this who said that. And it looks like it was just totally ignored. So I wondered if anyone could address that at all, probably not. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about is there were about a, more than a dozen people that spoke at the May seventeenth Township Committee meeting. These are residents of our town. And I think there was a theme. I'll try not to be repetitive, but I think that I want you to hear. If you haven't watched that meeting or didn't, or weren't aware of what people were saying, some of these people were real pillars of our community. They have long established, great reputations in the business community, the legal community, the FBI, whatever. And I think their points have to be listened to as well as what you're hearing tonight.
Okay, Ms. Pasternak, again, this is, this is your, your, you know, questions and testimony, not, not re-characterizing others, please. But I just want to make sure we're conscious of everybody's time.
These are quotes. You can look at the actual tape. I took the time.
Okay, thank you. Please continue.
People said, okay. People were not aware. This is an Aaron Brockovich moment from Melbourne. This is segregation. A lawyer representing Melbourne represented RPM. That is a conflict. He ramrodded and used scare tactics. Two TC members changed their minds. If in error, they are entitled to change their minds in regard to the, the eleven Maine, nine Main Street project. Low income families already have challenges. The DPW site selection has impact on the quality of life on children. A petition with eleven hundred signatures against nine Main Street project has circulated in the community. I have grave concerns around the DPW site. Land is toxic, pending EPA studies, costs not determined. Feasibility studies not conducted. Where will the recycling center be relocated? Slow down, revote, reconsider. Another person, as an attorney, looked at this objectively. Ten years from now, Melbourne will get lots of lawsuits. Issues of stigma, congestion, safety of children walking to and from school. Mayor is a Realtor and should not be voting on this. Next, Scott text yesterday and had no idea about this. There has been no transparency. Things can go south in a hurry. Putting this on the dump is a gigantic problem. Aaron Brockovich's suggestion is very true. People are not informed here in town. Next, attorney. They said they were attorney. Do not build on the town dump. As soon as someone gets a headache, we're going to be in, we are going to be hit with a forty million dollar settlement. You have no defense. Court won't care that it was a recycling center versus a dump. Every newspaper from LA to New York will cover this. The project will be condemned and torn down in ten years. You have no choice. No attorney would advise you to do this project, again, referring to nine Main Street. Next, I am a retired FBI New York Division investigator. I have done successfully hundreds of investigations, labor racketeering, corrupt cops and so forth. Listening to this tonight, there are red flags all over the place. If I was in the job, I would be digging and investigating. This project, nine Main Street, has risks to children and the town and it makes no sense.
Okay, Ms. Pasternak, hopefully you're, I, I, I think we're, we're getting definitely the sense. I just want to make sure we get through it. Okay.
Okay, I, I'm, if anything's redundant, I'm not going to say. You don't know, this was from a, a, I think he was a businessman. You don't know the finances of the project. What are we on the hook for? We have no idea what it will cost. It could be tens of millions of dollars. Postpone the decision until you have arms around the cost of the project. And let's see if there's anything new. It's really just more of the same kind of stuff. But there's a lot of concern about the lack of transparency and and violating the fair share housing rules with a hundred percent project. Okay, so that's that group of people. Then on the petition itself, there were people who also wrote comments and I think some of them are, again, relevant that may not be redundant with this, but one said you're setting up low income families on a contaminated site. This is wrong. The piece is too small. Where are the children of seventy five families supposed to play and where are all these people parking? Mixed income housing gives people a better start in town. This area is really close to middle school in downtown and would create a very congested and high traffic area, which is already tight. Having residents near the school playground in town will further increase high risk for kids and schoolchildren who are in that, that area morning to evening. This will be, this will produce traffic to a level that will hamper access to the hospital where I work. See, I am deeply disappointed in township committee members who feel that the plan presented to us would reflect the values of Melbourne. Are we really thinking that is okay to sec, sector off an area potentially contaminated almost under the railroad tracks, high wires next to the middle school in the center of town and point out that those residents are only there because of low income? Surely we can do better than that.
So Ms. Pasternak, again, this is not, this is not your testimony. You're reading other people's and I just want to, just we're, we're going on and on. I want to, there are other people with their hands raised, so I want to make sure we get it. I appreciate it that if we have it and we have it in.
As appointed officials who are making a decision that is transformative to our town, I think it's important that you hear from all of us. And there are different forms of doing that. There was a petition and there were people who came to a public meeting. I appreciated that you listened. Thank you very much. And I hope that you can answer some of my questions that didn't get answered yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to mention two things. Number one, I've been accused of having represented RMP. Ms. Pasternak said that I never made that statement because I never represented RMP. She has her facts wrong. Secondly, one has to remember that the housing element and fair share plan that we are considering tonight is a part of the master plan. And as Ms. McManus mentioned, this aspect of the master plan is intended to fulfill the township's constitutional obligation and for providing a realistic opportunity for the construction of affordable housing. And insofar as it may be inconsistent with other aspects of the master. And insofar as it may be inconsistent with other aspects of the master plan, the constitutional obligation of the township trumps legislative provisions if, if they are not consistent with the constitution. Thank you.
Okay. I'd just like to say, someone stood up. No, you called me a liar, so I need to defend my-
He corrected, he corrected the statement that was made.
That's fine, but there is on record, there's a recording of that meeting. It was held at the Milburn Middle School. I am certain that I heard that, but if I did not-
Not hear that correctly because I've never represented them, never had anything to do with RPM. Go back and you can check the fact and you will find that it was not Edward Buzak who made any such comment.
Fine. I, I will double check what I heard and what has been recorded. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments or responses?
If I could just add to Mr. Buzak's comment regarding consistency with master plan, you know, his comments. I just, I do just want to note for the benefit of the board and the public that goal number one of the two thousand eighteen master plan objective one point oh five does state this, the following statement, create the realistic opportunity to provide for the township's fair share of the region's affordable housing. So affordable housing is a, an objective and providing for is an objective of the current adopted master plan for the township. I just wanted to make reference for that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Graham. Okay. Thank you for your comments. We still have, I think, three folks. Mr. Feld, he should be with us and hopefully you can unmute and we can hear you. We, we see you, but we cannot hear you still.
Now, do you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening. It's getting late. And I think we had to clarify certain points. We just heard about the constitutional obligation to provide fair share housing. But there's also a constitutional obligation of the township to allow citizens to be heard. This is still a government of the people, by the people and for the people. I think no one, I feel for the planning board, because you inherited a situation that you did not create. No one disputes that the citizens were not provided an opportunity to be heard prior to consideration and official action on the settlement on July thirtieth and August seventeenth, two thousand twenty one. Earlier this evening, we heard about losing control over zoning. Citizens have lost control over zoning as to this settlement. I think, one, we had to go back to the methodology of finding the RDP. And that requires you, you can't ignore the methodology that was set forth in April two thousand eighteen. There's a formula. You take the acres, put six units on it, then you divide it by point twenty, and that's how you get the RDP. That conflicts with the schedule that was part of the settlement. You have higher ratios. We should understand that. But going forward, we heard tonight that this planning board will own this new fair share plan. And I believe we had to clarify certain issues. If there's a conflict between the August seventeenth, two thousand twenty one settlement and the plan that's dated June second that you're considering tonight, what controls? That goes to the issue about the low income housing tax credits and the long-term tax exemptions. Because in the settlement, we say we are going to provide for the first time to a project long-term tax exemptions. And I think we have to clarify that. I think as part of drafting, it might be very helpful if there's an additional schedule attached here as to all the ordinances that are referenced in the agreement. Whether they're the ordinances that approve the Upton deal, the Silverman deal, the Annie Says deal and the Wells Fargo deal, that should be there. Because also there's references at the end of the agreement to something called the Affordable Housing Ordinance. I don't know what that is. I understand about the inclusionary zoning ordinance, but I don't know what the Affordable Housing Ordinance is. I don't know if it has a number. I don't know when it was adopted. I think there needs to be clarifications. And that's on page thirty eight. If you go to page thirty nine, when we were talking about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, about the redevelopment fee ordinance that was adopted around eleven o'clock at the last meeting in May, I think you need to look at that paragraph and see if that's true. And Graham probably could give a little more insight in there because, because Maggie asked for a certain type of provision about the increase in the aggregate that they would be like a carve out. That carve out is not in that paragraph on page thirty nine. And I would just be concerned as the planning board, you own the document and I would just like it to be accurate. Because that goes back to like Wells Fargo. Because Wells Fargo deal, remember there was two pieces of litigation filed that they went back to the planning board twice originally, that what got a suit, and then they came back. I think you should have that procedural history set forth in your agreement, which is not there. As, I mean, the real issue comes back to, we were told in June two thousand twenty one that nothing would happen at the DPW site without any prior public comment from the public. That did not occur. Mr. Marazidi in our BA said that. Mr. Chase was on the call. Mr. Cosgrove was on the call. There are a lot of people we heard that. The public was lied to. And unfortunately, that's the stench that follows this whole night. This has been going on since the Silverman project with rooftop decks. We lived through that. That's why it's very important that we have the overlay zoning ordinance, because we were talking about densities before earlier this evening with Gaston. I think Gaston was talking about heights of buildings. We need to have all this information set forth now. And I really think it's very important that we have a schedule attached to the document saying what are all the ordinances that are required? So when we go to this compliance hearing, we know every piece is in place. Because we're here tonight on June, what, fifteenth? We were supposed to be in court on June eighth. We weren't ready. We need to make sure we have all the pieces in place. If we need the overlay zoning ordinance in place, let's get it in place before we go to court. Because there's a very simple issue that I brought up at the May seventeenth meeting. The public has not even been told yet. When is the date that they had to file written objections to the court? When is the date that citizens who want to listen or participate at the final compliance hearing had to notify Mr. Buzak and the court? That notice hasn't even occurred yet. And I'm just saying to you, take time. Make sure there's no inconsistencies that this agreement is correct. And Graham, you know, we've been talking about for years, you know, we, since you showed up in around November this year. I think there's nothing wrong to have a schedule here saying these are the dates of all the ordinances that we use to have our compliance. Because I don't believe we're, we're ready to go because based on what happened tonight. We need our overlay. We need a long-term tax exemption policy and procedure ordinance. Because to get a long-term tax, long-term, no, low income housing tax credits, you need a long-term tax exemption. And in your, in this document, you say they will go for low income housing tax credits. Let's be consistent between this document and our settlement agreement. Because that is a very issue because it's going to affect the funding of the schools. And that's an issue that I've been, I've been standing up and yelling about for at least two to three years in this town. But I know it's been a long night. I think I know how the trains are going, but if you're going to own this document, make sure there's no problems with it, that when you have defined terms, you know what it means. And I disagree for what our special fair share housing planner said about collecting fees. There is something called the best practice inventory. Inclusionary zoning, template ordinance should have been adopted years ago. We should have been collecting monies. You know, maybe the money's going to go into our pot, but we heard before the money would have went to the state and that would have built other affordable housing throughout the state. Who dropped the ball? This is, this whole process has been about who dropped the ball and who keeps on pointing fingers at each other. Tonight we're hearing the planning board point the fingers at the local governing body. The local governing body pointing the fingers at the planning board or their plant pointing at their attorneys.
Thank you, Mr. Feld.
For us to be grownups, to work together if we had to do the obligations. And when we talk about the obligation, I think this agreement, because this agreement concurred with my analysis. When we talk about unmet needs, who's in the unmet needs? Woodmont, which is subject to the environmental approvals and the DPW site. And it's the DPW site that's incited really this community. And if I was someone living in South Mountain or in Wyoming, I'd be in up in arms. When did you learn that there's going to be a hundred and fifty unit project in your top part of the town? You found out after the settlement. I feel for you tonight. It's getting late. But you're feeling the anger of a lot of the community. I'm sorry, but you've become a lightning rod. But it's time to say, if we're going to approve this agreement, let's make sure it's right. Let's make sure everything is in there, that we have everything that no one knows. And someone when he looks at that knows where to go look for the ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feld. And I appreciate the, one of the earlier points you made on if there are ordinances to actually label them and number them as such, I think that might be a helpful addition we can make. You know, if we're referencing specific ordinances that have been adopted, we can reference them by number, some of which I believe, Beth, please correct me if this is wrong, have not yet been developed, drafted or approved by us or the TC.
Yeah, that's correct. So there are a couple of things that I can respond to. So one, yes, the inclusionary zoning ordinances have not been introduced or shared with the planning board yet, so they just simply can't, I, I can't include them, obviously. I will say that ordinances that are for implementation of this housing element fair share plan will certainly be part of the court's record and will be part of the court's review, just for Mr. Feld's information, for anybody else that's curious about that process. There was a question about what is the Affordable Housing Ordinance and have that been adopted yet? Yes, it has been adopted. It's ordinance twenty five ninety six dash two two. And that is an ordinance that simply regulates affordable housing units that are created regardless of where they're created, what program, what developer, et cetera. It has no no relevance to site-specific zoning. It's just simply if you're building affordable housing units in town, these are the standards that you must meet. So for example, it would talk about setting rents properly, marketing the units, number of bedrooms per unit, things like all of the various requirements for affordable housing units. I just need to push back on the assertion that, that are incorrect about the development fees. The municipality, like every municipality, was required to collect a two point five percent non-residential development fee when the state adopted that amendment to the Fair Housing Act. I, I have no reason to believe Milburn did not do that and, and then of course send those fees to the state. But we are not able to retain those or collect residential development fees until we start this process. And as I said before, have our development fee ordinance approved and either adopt a plan to spend those fees or commit to doing so in the future. And then the last thing I wanted to know is everything that is before the planning board today, this evening, is part of the housing element of the master plan. A lot of these other documents that are being referenced, like the ordinances, yes, they're they're relevant to the housing plan because it's part of its implementation, but that's not actually part of the master plan element itself.
Question of transparency. If when you look at a document, we hear collusionary zoning or you talk the other one. You keep, the average person will not know where to look at. And I think just having a schedule will make it easier for someone who's, maybe not today, it might be two years from now, has to track something down that they're not going on a snipe hunt. I'm just trying to make something easier. I made that in a suggestion in good faith. Because a lot of the things that we're talking about is bad faith, and my feeling bad faith, was if you made your plan in April of two thousand eighteen-
Thank you, Mr. Feld. Yeah, I think-
You could have taken steps in doing things. We could have taken the survey about how many apartment buildings are deemed to be blighted or need to be rehabilitation. We don't even know that it's even occurred yet. And then we did that in the settlement.
Mr. Feld, just in the interest of time, I, I, we did, we did allow you to make a testimony and ask questions. We still have a few people who have their hand raised.
I love the other people. I'm going to go off. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm eager to allow us to finish this and have a have a conclusion of a meeting tonight. Mr. Morrow, welcome back, David. We can't hear you just yet. David Morrow, I don't, you-
Oh, I'm sorry, Beth. I did not hear my name.
Okay, apologies there. You're with us.
David Morrow, One Ivy Terrace, Milburn. I have a couple of basic questions regarding nine Main Street. I'll, I'll keep it short. I know it's late. Who retained the environmental firm that did the initial assessment on nine Main Street?
I think that was done by the, I have to assume done by the governing body.
Is that an assumption or you know that for a fact?
It wasn't part of that process, but it, so I, I guess I can't state definitively since I didn't bear witness to it, but as a, an entity working for the municipality, it must have been run through the, the governing body to approve the budget and the, the project scope.
So I guess my follow-up question of that is, has every member of the planning board seen that initial environmental review?
We have not.
Okay. Those are the two questions I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Okay, Nancy Stone. Should be with us.
Yes, Nancy Stone, Ten Fielding Road, Short Hills. I am joining this meeting after listening to all the testimony and again, I apologize for being so late, but we have a community that wants to speak and also more so wants to be heard. Beth, I found you very dismissive to several of the people that were speaking tonight. After that incredible, incredible statement from Jerry Kung, the best you could respond to him was, let's be respectful. To who? I find it appalling that you would not defend a resident over what was being said. He made such incredible points, incredible, incredible, for laymen to understand. When this TC and you had two TC members that took back their votes and forced a revote on May seventeenth. And this planning board is now going to vote on something that you haven't even read the environmental study. And you're going to take ownership of that? Why is the town lawyer not being fired over representing us so poorly? He, a statement was made at the May seventeenth meeting that if you, if they pulled back from the settlement, we'd be open to all these lawsuits. And he went so far, Mr. Buzak went so far to say that if we reneged on the settlement agreement, that he would quit. Good riddance. Good riddance. Find another attorney that's going to represent the residents. The people on this planning board are residents of the community. McManus doesn't live here. Buzak doesn't live here, but all of you that are on this planning board do live here and you're going to have to own it because the concerned residents have risen and they are not going away. And they are powering up for a major lawsuit based on the decisions that the TC makes and this planning board. So get ready because you're going to have to own this. All of you as residents like we are. It is disgusting that we even have to get to this level to have to listen to a McManus and listen to a Buzak tell us how we're going to be, we should be voting because of a state- How we're going to be, we should be voting because of a state mandate that is stigmatizing community of families. And a community when no feasibility studies were done, this whole thing is an atrocity. And if you want to take personal liability, each one of you and sign on your agreement tonight. That each of you will put your houses up for collateral, that each one of you are going to own. The future possible lawsuits against that site and it's a dump. It's a dump, not DPW like Alex McDonald said, it is the dump. It is historically been called the dump. It's always been called the dump and it is the dump. So I think all of you, which I'm used to being ignored, but I still show up. But I'm used to being ignored as many other residents tonight who have spoken up are used to being ignored. We know how you're going to vote because it's just predictable. It's absolutely predictable. And I wanted my statement on the record. That you need to start representing the Milburn residents. All of us, 100% of the community. Who cares what Beth McManus says? Who cares what Buzek says? Start thinking with your own heads and stop being puppets for other people. It's appalling. So go ahead and take your vote because everybody's now watching. But unfortunately, it's going to be too little, too late because all of you are going to have to own this. So I'm really curious to know if all of you are willing to put your homes on collateral for this future and own this. Thank you.
Okay, we thank you for your statement. I. Have, I don't think there are any specific questions that we need to respond to. I think we hear.
No, there is no question. It was a statement.
The only statement I want to respond to is that I'm not the township authority. I was not at the May 17th meeting. And any statements that were attributed to me at that meeting did not occur because I was not at the meeting. I'm not the township authority.
No, you did not say it at the meeting. It was said by Tara that you said that you were going to quit if we pull back from this meeting. If we pull back from this settlement agreement, you can go back and listen to the meeting. It's all recorded. Thank God, these meetings are recorded. But it was a statement made. So you're going on the record to say that if we, if, if one more member voted against. Taking a pause, you're going on the record by saying you were not going to quit?
So Miss Stone, I thank you for the question. I don't, this is not a, a case of Ed going on the record as to what was said about. Okay, I, I don't want to take that item at this meeting. I don't think that's.
You don't want to own it. Nobody wants to own anything, but you're going to own the vote.
Thank you for your statement. I, we were respectful of your time and we let you speak and heard you. Several personal attacks.
You're the one that let a lot of people talk for a very long time. And I had a lot to say, there's no, all the questions that I had were asked. But it, again, it is absolutely outrageous that you're going to take a vote on something that you haven't even seen the environmental report. When we have, I mean, it's unbelievable when people don't even know about what's going on. Disgusting.
Eileen, I think we see one more question.
Bringing over, I see two hands from people that have already, already.
And I think we're going to continue.
She hasn't spoken yet. There we go.
Hi, Oian, you should be in here and able to unmute.
Hi, good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, well, thank you for bringing me on. I would like to echo a lot of. Things that we've heard from residents tonight that I feel like we all should, you know, take a pause. And, you know, reveal, you know, the, the results before we, we take any decisions. I don't want to sound accusatory, but I really want to, I would like to know. Who's behind the scene making all this push and all this decisions? Because, you know, the, the residents have spoken. They, they all want us to revisit this. And as one person said, this is a dump. It is not a DPW. I don't think any one of us will want to put our family. In, in that space. And I feel like, you know, I said it at the township meeting. It is a lawsuit that's ready to, you know, to, in a couple of years, if one child gets sick, you know, an adult, you know, you cough. You know, we'll be sued. So if we're thinking that by building on this dump site. That we're doing, you know, some low income family a favor, we're not, we really aren't. You know, people are selling their homes, that people are moving out of Milburn Short Hills. We're trying to get people. You know, to, to come into our town, to stay, to love what we love and why we are here. And I think we really need to sit down and really rethink this and hear our residents. We need to hear and listen to what they're saying, what they have to say. You know, we are all being put in a position for a reason to be able to make really good decisions. Concrete and sound and common sense decision. And I think if we sit down, no one is saying we don't want affordable housing in Milburn Short Hills. We just want it to be done right. You know, exactly what we did with the opt-in is what we really need to look at. Yeah. And I'll give you an example. If we bring a low income family, you know, to this dump site. Whenever any kid, you know, come out of that building, they are stigmatized. I, I, I mean, I've said it so many times. Other residents have said the same thing. It's very simple. If you're walking out of that building, people know that you're coming from an affordable, an affordable housing unit. So if we really want to do low income family a favor, I think we need to sprinkle them around town. I think we need to find a better solution for this. You know, I've said it so many times in several meetings and I just feel like we're just not being heard. We're, we're not being listened to. So I would want us to take a pause in, into making any kind of, you know, doing any voting or. I, I, I heard some residents are saying that if we don't go through with this, we just need to go through with it. Why? Why the rush and why the push? If we don't go through with it, what will happen? What's the worst that, that can happen? You know, the worst that will happen is that we get sued. We already been sued left and right. And we will have more lawsuits if we build this. So, you know, I, I, I would just want to add my two cents again. You know, calmly, you know, I beg of all of you to, to, to make sure you read the environmental re, re, report. And, and do right by the residents. Please listen to us. Just hear us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the comments. Okay, I think there are no further, while I do recognize that there are hands up, it's from members of the public who have already. Had opportunities to ask questions and engage in dialogue. So given that we're at nearly 11:00 PM, we're going to. Close the public session unless there are other members of the public who have not yet. Had any questions asked. Okay. So we turn to members of the board at this point. We would open it up. Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, for anybody to make a motion. To adopt the, the fair share housing element as. Discuss tonight. But before that, I see Dan Bear has a question.
Yeah, just, Ed, I'd like you to, to one more time, if you would, please. Cite the constitutional and legislative obligations of this board. If you would, before we vote.
Well, the constitutional obligation is the constitutional obligation of the township to provide towards land development regulations, including the zoning ordinances. A realistic opportunity for the construction of the fair share of the region's low and moderate income and housing needs. That. General constitutional obligation. Is implemented through the Fair Housing Act and the process that set forth there and in the municipal land use law. One of the steps in that process is the adoption of a housing element and fair share plan, which is before the board. That implements or. Memorializes that constitutional obligation. In this case, the constitutional obligation or the satisfaction of the constitutional obligation. Was achieved through a settlement agreement that the township entered into as part of the declaratory judgment action. That settlement agreement was approved by the Superior Court at a hearing, fairness hearing that took place in January of this year. And this housing element and fair share plan. Mirrors, for lack of a better word, that settlement agreement. So this housing element fair share plan becomes the portion of the master plan that implements the constitutional obligation. That is memorialized in the settlement agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I, just for your information, I have a resolution that I prepared. So we have something in writing, the resolution, if the board is so inclined. Is a resolution adopting the third round housing element and fair share plan as a component of the master plan of the township of Milburn. That's the title of the resolution. The resolution refers to our master plan, refers to this document. It's June 2nd, housing element and fair share plan that we've been considering tonight. Refers to the history in the preamble that Ms. McManus has gone through. As well as the history of the township's activities, including the adoption of the 2018. Housing element fair share plan that will be superseded by this resolution. And I just want to read the three paragraphs or four paragraphs of the resolution as it relates to your actual action. And that is number one, the township of Milburn Planning Board hereby approves and adopts the housing element and fair share plan entitled, quote. Housing element and fair share plan township of Milburn, New Jersey, County of Essex. New Jersey dated June 2, 2022. As an amendment to an element of the 1991 comprehensive master plan as thereafter amended and supplemented. And hereby repeals the April 2018 housing element fair share plan previously adopted on April 18, 2018. Number two, the final version of the adopted housing 2022 housing element and fair share plan shall be placed in a bound volume with a certified copy thereof. Placed in the office of the township clerk of the township of Milburn, as well as the office of the board. For future use and to represent a portion of the officially adopted master plan. Number three, pursuant to NJSA 4055 D dash 13, the board secretary. Shall cause a copy of this resolution together with a copy of the adopted 2022 housing element fair share plan. To be sent to the office of planning advocacy and to the Essex County Planning Board, not more than 30 days after the adoption. And number four, the board, the board secretary and all other officials and employees and professionals of the township. Are hereby authorized and directed to take all steps necessary. To effectuate the purposes of this resolution. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Thank you.
Before we, are you hearing me? Okay, I'm getting a internet note. I see Allison can't feel that her hand raised.
I do. I just have one question. We didn't meet the, what was it? The. June 8th deadline. And we're having a meeting on the 15th. What is the official deadline to approve? This proposal?
Madam Chair, if you'd like me to respond as best I can.
Yeah, that's great.
There, there was no official time period. The original final compliance hearing was scheduled for June 10th. The hearing was adjourned to June 30th. So that, that's the date that we, the township, have to go before the court. And set forth to the court, all of the things we've done to implement the terms and conditions of the settlement agreement. One of which is to approve the housing element fair share plan and to have the township endorse that housing element fair share plan. The current schedule, it's anticipated that the planning board would consider this housing element fair share plan tonight. If approved, the township committee would consider endorsement of it at its June 21st, I think it is meeting. And at the same time, will consider introduction of the various overlay ordinances. That are in the process of being finalized by the township planner and the affordable housing plan. And we'll go before the court on June 30th. So that's the, so the schedule that I could give you.
Thank you. I just have one more question. Was there any legal reason why this board did not see the environmental report?
They're available online. They are, they're available as to the public as well on the Milburn Township website. So it was not a matter of, it just wasn't circulated among the board, but it's all publicly accessible.
Okay, thank you.
Now, there's, there's just one other thing that I wanted to mention. So that the record is, is complete. The board received. A written comment from Jay and Patricia Mori Ali was dated June 6, 2022. That email. Which is a couple of pages was circulated to all the board members for their consideration. I'm not going to read through the entire comment since everyone had that. That email, but I just would want that incorporated into the record for today's hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question.
Deborah? Oh, you, you did Diane or I see Deborah had her hand raised. Yeah.
Okay, um, I just want to say that when Ms. McManus said earlier this evening that the. Environmental issues are well understood by the governing body. I don't think that's true. It's a thousand page report. So I, we don't have a clear understanding of that at all. I don't think that's fair. And now that I know no one else has seen that, I don't know who's read the thousand pages or even the summary at the end. I'm still not clear on who's paying for that. Even if RPM pays, it's really Milburn Township that pays. So we don't know what that's going to cost. As far as making the density more equitable, I think that is a really important piece of this puzzle. Cause we're not just voting on Nine Main Street. You're passing this entire packet to township committee, which is including all those overlay zones. That will forever change the town. And Mr. Buzak, why don't we just explain what happens if this doesn't pass tonight? Cause I don't know how these people are going, I don't know how this is going, I know I'm going to vote, obviously. I don't know how you, you're all going to vote. So Mr. Buzak, what happens if you don't get a majority this evening?
If the, if the housing element fair share plan doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. And, you know, in terms of the legal ramifications, as I said, I'm happy to talk to the board about that in closed session, but I'm not prepared to. Provide that advice in open session.
I don't understand that. I mean, what? I think we should all know what the ramifications are going to be. And again, closed sessions, see, because then you close sessions, you can't, we can't reveal anything.
That was the response of our attorney. Yeah, I, I understand.
I'm sorry, but I, I don't find that clear, clear enough and acceptable for me. I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but if we have a closed session after the fact, why didn't we have a closed session before? So people don't understand what they're doing this evening if they are uncomfortable. And if it doesn't pass, because we are uncomfortable. Do we get sued? Can we go back to fair share housing as Tara and I did, as Ms. Stone pointed out? Take a vote that we wanted to go back to fair share housing and clear up some of these items that are of uncomfortable nature to the town.
Well, I know Mr. Buzak said he's not comfortable discussing it. I would just re-raise something that had been discussed at our, the June 1st meeting that comes to mind, which is that the. Builders remedy case, we would, I believe we would remain vulnerable to some, a such situation if we don't have a. Adopted plan in place, but I don't, I, I can't speak to anymore and I'm not our attorney, so I can't speak to all the legal.
I think we should have had a closed session before so people understand the ramifications if they wanted more clarification or more time. But, you know.
Okay, Deborah, you had your hand raised.
I did. Mr. Feld had brought up the idea of attaching the ordinances to the agreement. Is this when we would make? A motion for that or how does that?
He did. He did. And, and I, that was on my mind, but Beth, as she mentioned that, you know, the, the ordinances are, it's sort of, I don't know if you want to speak maybe Beth more to it, but like sort of which comes first, the plan versus the ordinances. So I don't know if you wanted to speak to that or, or maybe Graham could as well.
Well, I think, you know, let's see. So typically, the, typically the housing plan leads because it sets the policy basis. It, when we're talking about the inclusionary housing ordinances, which I think are more relevant to the concerns people have expressed, typically the plan leads because that provides the policy basis, the master plan basis for adopting those ordinances and, and for potentially a finding for consistency with the master plan. So I think there are a couple of things that the board should know. One, I'll, I'll defer to Ed as to whether or not you can make a motion to include a list and how that might, might work. I don't want to insert myself into legal questions more so than I sometimes can't help myself. But the other thing is, once this, as I mentioned at one point, all of these documents need to be submitted to the court. So for folks that might be concerned about being able to track documents, you know, what, what, what ordinances, what documents were subject to the court approval, what's related to this housing element and fair share plan and what isn't. So in part, that process will be answered through the court, to the court process. And if the municipality decides for the purposes of transparency, that you'd like to have a package of everything that was approved by the court subsequent to that court approval process, I'm sure that's something that, that, well, I'm certain that that's something I'm happy to work with the township on. If you're looking for, like I said, for transparency purposes, to have a complete package of all the documents that are relevant. Once we have those items in place, adopted, I'm happy to work with all of you to put together that package. If folks want it posted or information placed on the website.
Okay, so that sounds like your response was that it could happen later and that's more because the ordinances follow from the plan. So.
They're literally not introduced. I, I couldn't, I couldn't attach them to the housing plan right now if I want, if, if you directed me to.
Those which don't exist yet, right?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
And can I just ask, like, what is a closed session and what would it take to have a closed session?
Ed, can you take that one?
Yes. Under the Open Public Meetings Act, there's an attorney-client exception to conducting a meeting in public. A motion would be made to conduct a closed session for me to provide advice to you, legal advice to you in a confidential fashion. If the motion passes, we go in a closed session. Mechanically, I'd have to defer to Eileen how we do that in, in the program that we have. And we go in a closed session. I give you the advice, answer any legal questions that you may have. And then that closed session would be adjourned and you'd come out in open session and you proceed with the balance of the meeting.
Unfortunately, in the Zoom platform, I can't do that, a closed session. I would have had to know in advance to set up a different meeting with a different password that's only available to board members. And then I would have to have somebody stay here, but I, because this is just one, I don't have a meeting set up.
Understood.
For it.
So that means we can't have one, even if we wanted to?
It, it appears that way. Yes.
Okay. So Ed, you read a few paragraphs to us?
Yes.
And those would be the language if someone were to make a motion upon which we would act?
That is correct.
Okay. So that said, does anybody want to make a motion for this evening, given the discussion we have had?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do we have a second? I will second the motion.
Eston Halpert?
No.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Deborah Neves?
No.
Sujatha Shahn?
No.
Diane Egglow?
No.
Trudy Vijay?
No.
Allison Canfield?
I'm sorry, I couldn't unmute. I'm an alternate. Am I allowed to vote or there not enough?
We are voting because we are township members.
Got it. Yes.
Daniel Bear?
I'm going to go back to what council said tonight, that our constitutional obligation could, and again, I'm going to use the term ties our hands. It does tie our hands. And irrespective of how we feel about how the densities should be at each site is essentially irrelevant because an agreement was made with the courts to establish these densities. And I hear everybody tonight and I respect what everybody said tonight. And I hope they had that opportunity to say those things to the township committee when they were developing this plan. But unfortunately, we have to do what we have to do and we have to stay within our parameters. So my vote tonight is yes.
Ed Sol?
Yes.
Sujatha, did you have a question? See her hand raised.
Nope, she, she moved. She's okay.
Okay.
Sorry, what is the final vote?
Final vote is four yes, five no.
Okay, so it is not, is not passed. Okay. That is the conclusion of our meeting. Ed, is there anything additional that we would need to cover this evening?
No, there is not.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I do have a quick, I'm sorry. I, I'm really sorry, but I do have a quick question. Can we take the opportunity now to have a closed session with legal? Now that we are going to then go into this piece, I think that's really important.
Problem is that this meeting has a public, it's a public meeting. So it would, there was nothing that would prevent someone from logging on.
Okay.
Clarification another day because now we've closed this one out.
Yes.
Now I think we do need a closed session that we didn't, you know, we didn't plan ahead for or receive. I concur with what Dan Bear is saying is the fact that our hands are tied and now we need to know and the vote tonight. I didn't know I could make a comment. But I do believe that we need to be more informed as going forward than we have up to this point. So thank you.
I actually.
Yes, Sujatha?
So when we have a closed session, do we, could we also have a presentation of the alternatives? If we voted, if this didn't pass today and we're in the same situation, what are the alternatives that we could consider?
Yes, I think we'll have a closed session and we'll have to discuss and understand. I think there's, our board has a lot of questions about, you know, what happens and what are the options or not the options that I think we would ask Ed to prepare and to be able to respond to.
Yes, but I do want to make it clear that the, the closed session would only relate to legal advice that I would give you. Policy decisions as to what you may or may want to do that are outside of that narrow legal advice corridor could not be discussed in closed session. That has to be discussed in open session. So going to do this, I would suggest that the, it would be set up in such a way, and I, I know they can be set up. I, as Eileen said, I think we just need to do this in advance, set up in a way where you'd have to have an open session, first of all, the call of meeting to order. Then you'd go into a closed session through a different, and again, I, I'm, I'm probably going to use the wrong words, but go into a separate room. You have your closed session discussion, which is only open to members of the planning board and the professionals. And then you come out of that into the public room, so to speak, to discuss the kinds of policy things that I think you are alluding to or maybe alluded to. And if we go in a closed session and you get into things that are outside the corridor, I will advise you to stop that discussion and save it for the public portion. So whatever meeting we have, we need to have the ability to do both closed session and, and an open session in order to air the whole issue. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all to the members who raised that. And I think we have our meeting in two weeks, July 6th. Perhaps we will look to schedule that and use some of that meeting time for both a closed session and the open session meeting as Ed just described. Thank you. With that said, I make a motion to adjourn. A second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Good night. Be safe.
Night, everybody.